This conference will now be recorded.
... several times. And that particular fence has been in there 70 years.
Can you hear us okay?
Well, I have Elman, Elman right here.
I can hear you Bruce.
Okay, thank you, stand by.
First order is, this is a correction. When I typed in the minutes, I typed in Crystal Tappens as a full-time permanent employee instead of part-time fill-in. The motion was made by Flanagan to so I just need to correct that to state part-time fill-in.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the change. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Do we have any conflicts?
None here.
Seeing none. We need the approval of the regular minutes from July 9.
Move to approve the minutes from July 9.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the past minutes. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Bills, what's your pleasure on the bills? I've, my questions have been answered.
So have mine.
Move to approve bills.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the bills. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Bills, what's your pleasure on the bills? I've, my questions have been answered.
So have mine.
Move to approve bills.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the bills. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Brenda Personnel.
First order is, this is a correction. When I typed in the minutes, I typed in Crystal Tappens as a full-time permanent employee instead of part-time fill-in. The motion was made by Flanagan to so I just need to correct that to state part-time fill-in.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the change. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
So the second one is Kyle Anderson, says it's separates. He works in information systems and technology. He's going to a specialist grade two, base pay of 3048, effective 714 of 24.
I'm going to approve hiring for separates of Kyle Anderson.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. Any discussion? Commissioner Sleep.
How long has he been in that category?
He was hired 1127 of 23, so over a year and a half.
Eight months.
Eight months, sorry.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. I can't see Brandon.
He's not on.
He's up there, he'd be top center mill.
I know, but how am I supposed to?
Usually he uses a thumbs up on voting.
There he is. Yeah, I seem to have some bandwidth issue once in a while, so I don't keep it on all the time.
All right, Brandon, I guess speak up if you're against something here. Otherwise, we will assume with the delay that you can do your thumbs up again. Thank you. Brenda, further?
Okay, the last thing I have for Personnel is Brett is here also asking the request for the approval of donation of leave for Tassie Ranepah as per Article 4, Section 4.1 of our Lawrence County Personnel Policy.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Okay, that's all I have.
All right, travel requests.
This is for Brett Runge to travel to the I-880 conference in Denver, Colorado from August 25th through the 28th.
Right here, Mr. Chairman, I think she's only requesting the registration fee. It's a national conference. She's got a place to stay, and I think it's going to create a role in travel as well.
Yeah, I was just to request a county vehicle to go down, otherwise it's just the conference fee.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. Further discussion, Commissioner Sleep.
Is this travel for your job that has to be that long a time to have to go?
So this is not mandatory, and that's, that's why I really, it was kind of unexpected. I didn't realize it's an international assessor organization. I didn't realize it was, it's just not often so close to the dragon distance. It's just a really good opportunity for good education. So it's not mandatory, so, you know, I put it out there. I mean, I'm interested in going, and when I looked through it, there's so much to choose from, it was kind of hard to, but, yeah, so that's, that's, so, yeah, it's not mandatory.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right, old growth, forest.
L A N, L E M D G.
Pardon?
The quarterly report.
Oh, I've got old growth first on my list.
Okay.
You want to do?
That's fine.
You want to do the L E P first?
I'm sorry, that's fine.
Isn't that what you guys have on your list?
Mine's a little different, so.
And you're the one that made it.
Yeah, I had to change him.
Are we going to have issues with you today, Bruce?
I can, yeah, you have to go to the corner.
Let's, we'll go ahead and go with yours. Paul, you want to take care of yours first, and then you guys can.
Quarterly reports submitted to South Dakota Emergency Management. To keep track of our activities and our requirements, so that we are reimbursed the percentage back to the Forest Council.
Okay, do we need to take action on that, Bruce?
Yes. Please.
Okay, we need a motion for approval of that, for me to sign the document.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, Brandon. All right, are we up to Mitch and Bill now?
Bill's on here. Mitch is here to discuss the overall forest, the United States Forest Service Amendment, right? And I think he's going to be, in your packet is the MOU, the cooperating agency MOU. I think he's going to be recommending that you send that, you sign that and send that on or before July 31st.
Okay, Mitch, you go up the floor, Sheriff.
Thank you, this opportunity. The old growth planning effort, as you all know, is a nationwide effort that was started by the Forest Service about six months ago. Released a draft EIS. They're at a fast pace to try to get it done by December, January of this year, before the administration goes out or changes or stays the same, whatever. So, the, they kind of locked out cooperating agencies, the counties at the beginning of the process. They're working really hard to bring back everyone in. They've done a really good job, in my opinion, of working with cooperating agencies. If we want to work in that capacity, we do need to sign an MOU with them by July 31st. The MOU is very brief and to the point. It has none of the strict conditions that the Black Hills National Forest has been advocating in their MOU. In fact, the, we spoke with the deputy chief a week ago, and their position on cooperating agencies is dramatically different than the Black Hills National Forest, which probably we need to discuss at some time, maybe before the meeting with Sean Cochran. They're saying things that are sometimes 180 degrees different. So I don't really agree with the old growth effort, because Black Hills National Forest already has old growth direction that was completed with a lot of public involvement, and it's, it's pretty good, really. But the thing is, is they're going to do this anyway, and nearly, as an example, Wyoming, nearly all the Wyoming counties have signed on as an MOU, as a cooperating agency. And I think it would behoove Lawrence County to, to sign on and be able to get information faster, to be able to talk about things that they're not talking about with the general public. And so I, that's my, my speech for today.
Okay.
That's really all I have. And if you have any questions more about the old growth process, let me know. But I do have to add one thing, is they're trying to keep it very general across the national forest systems, because the difference in national forests. We've pushed hard on that. I've attended all the meetings except one. Where they're leaning towards is to push a lot of that old growth direction and to let the forest itself develop it. And if you have adequate old growth direction, possibly keeping that, depending on who says what is adequate. Or to incorporate it with forest planning effort together with that. So that's kind of where, where that's at. There's a lot of concern from, especially in Wyoming with different counties, about why the Forest Service is doing this when there's already old growth projections in place. But I won't get into that.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Motion to approve the chairman signing the MOU between the Forest Service and the county on the national growth.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval from the signature. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Mitch. Reminder of the county convention.
Yeah, if you would please, Mr. Chairman, let me know if you plan on attending on or before the August 13th meeting, so that I can have payment submitted for your approval on the 27th.
I won't, myself, I won't be able to attend.
I will plan on it.
Yes.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, there's been concern by some regarding the parking of employee work vehicles, so not personal vehicles, in the parking ramp, and that that's taking up space for employees or state employees to park there. So I'm just getting, asking for ratification that, that that's what you continue to want, is to have sort of like equalization vehicles, planning zoning vehicle, other vehicles that we have parked in the ramp, as opposed to, I guess, down south here, probably in a city lot or, or something like that.
Well, I thought this was all settled many years ago when they built the parking ramp, and we were allotted so many for use. And I don't know why we would want to change that. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I think we just continue on with the agreement that we have.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I think we're ready for you, Sheriff Dean. Welcome, good morning.
Tony's on the line as well.
Even though you come in and was mean to us.
Tony's on the line as well.
Okay. Just doing your job.
Trying. This meeting, Mr. Chairman, is the time that we have spoken of preceding two meetings with specific respect for the Public Safety and Services Center, and our hopes to give, impart a financial update, as well as go over a changeover that is before us. So first, I'd like to offer you some thoughts. At this time, your finance committee can report that at this particular point in the project, due to the sound advice and wise handling of our resources, we forecast that sufficient funds are in hand to meet all financial obligations as we move forward. As indicated for the preceding several months, soft cost purchases have been made with increasing frequency, and we are now at a peak of that process whereby, over the next couple of months, months, much will need to be ordered. We have a committee, the committee has a plan, and we are functioning by way of a very well-thought-out execution of that plan. As a side note, we've met many times. We meet for two different meetings every other week, just as a standard, and have done so for, I think, pretty much this entire project. But over and above that, we tend to meet, if not call each other directly, we are in constant contact with each other in managing your funds, the county taxpayer funds, with our, I will say, extreme efforts we're doing here. Things seem to be right where we would anticipate them to be, and we're not forecasting at present any future problems financially. Now, that having been said, I'd like to address change order number four. Now, that having been said, I'd like to address change order number four. Uh, I believe that's been circulated. I'd like to point out in particular interest uh, the verbiage that will appear right here. It starts off with additional working days, uh, to the contract, and, uh, Dr. Alka and I have, uh, I'll say lengthy conversations, uh, in this regard, uh, yesterday. Uh, other members of our committee have weighed in as well. It is our understanding that this particular, uh, change order does not request any extra days. That having been said, there is a discussion to that, uh, extent that will be taking place, uh, with the board. Um, we've got some information that we could offer now if you, uh, were of a mind to deal with it, or we can speak on that matter at a later time.
Later? At a later date.
Okay, uh, therefore then, moving forward, I would ask that the board address now any questions that you may have in regards to those items listed twenty-one through thirty-five. And we can offer, uh, somebody is here that can offer explanations on it, either Bruce or I, or.
Tony and John Taylor are on too, so. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Bruce.
If I may know, um, if you look at the list, the, there's two items in a row, those are credits. The total add to the contract, I think, is eighty thousand eight fifty-three. And ultimately, upon a discussion, if you approve it, they're looking for authorization to have the chairman sign that, if we get to that. That's the end goal.
Okay, uh, do you think we need any executive section?
Um, I, I don't, I don't know that you, that you do, uh.
Okay.
Um, I think again, the sheriff or Tony or somebody in the room is prepared to offer as good of an explanation for any of those items that are listed as, as they're needed, that, you know, they're fairly, I think, self-explanatory. Nothing too extravagant or fun on the list.
Would, would this motion, uh, include the thirty-eight days extra they're asking for?
It does not.
So they're two separate discussions.
I think that that was included in there just to let you know that, that that is a request that's going to be coming.
Okay, that's just, uh, informational today.
Yes.
All right, does anyone have questions on this, uh, these items twenty-one through thirty-five?
Uh, if we could just, Sheriff, if you could just give us a little rundown of why these change orders came, of this new technology that became available, or this, uh, oversights, or what, uh, what, what, what created the, the cause of it?
Uh, certainly. So it is, uh, our, our collective and growing experience that in any project of this size, change orders are inevitable. Uh, sometimes they are as a result of an oversight. Sometimes they are as a result of a misinterpretation of what a specific need might be. But I can hit each of these within just a couple of minutes and give you a brief explanation, so if, if you'd like.
That'd be fantastic.
So, number twenty-one, uh, adding electrical strikes. Electrical strikes were added, uh, four at exterior doors, one at an interior door of a vestibule which are needed to accommodate access controls, which excludes card readers from these locations. We went through a process of value-added engineering where we were trying to get the cost of the building down to a point that was affordable, and in our aggressive attempts to do that, sometimes, uh, things were cut that we found out we actually needed to have. Uh, number twenty-two, changes required in final coordination with the owner's, uh, vendor. In other words, the, uh, the specific vendor that was, uh, assigned to that area needed something more than what we had anticipated. If that was an oversight, it would have been a collective oversight. Revised mechanical room piping, piping size needed to be increased from three to four inches between water heater and the storage tanks. Uh, number twenty-four, the diffuser and transfer grill revisions. And transfer ducts were needed to provide a return air path back to the air handler where walls were interpreted to be open above the ceiling. Uh, add a fire alarm enunciator panels. In short, Bruce and I and Tim met with our local fire department, and that was a recommendation on their part. Lobby phone operationally, uh, there's a need to include a phone in the twenty-four-seven lobby space that was not fully realized during the design. Landscape revisions, that was, uh, Tim, uh, did right on the mark. He found a way to save some money uh, by not seeding a particular area and just letting wild grass grow, which is consistent with the aesthetics of our area. Uh, door positioning switches, this added eight-door position switches to chase doors and mechanical penthouse doors. The door position switches will alert central control when these doors are, doors are open. So in a perpetual review of the security of the facility, that became noted. Um, dayroom rearrangement and delete chase wallets. We were studying the design, we found a way to save money. So that was all. Prime sheet rock, uh, in short, uh, Tim asked for that in that, uh, there's no protective coating on the sheet rock that's in the pipe case. It's Tim's experience as our buildings and ground fellow that'd be at least put a, uh, coat of paint on there. It protects it, uh, longer than some. Ankle door at the twenty-four-seven reception was too wide. Uh, frankly, I found the skinniest person I could find and they could squeeze through it, so we had to adjust it.
That was me, by the way.
Ad foreign while, uh, whole pile to the showers and locker rooms. Um, this was the cheapest way that we could fix, uh, an oversight. Um, add trench to the drains in the, uh, uh, vehicle sally port. This was a collective effort from our, from Tim, our buildings and grounds working with R C S and the site superintendent, who, uh, upon review, didn't think that that area would drain like it should, and so an adjustment was made. Power raceway and grounding, uh, that is a particular issue that we have been working extremely hard on. We had to make some changes in how our antenna is going to function, which ended up in changing the way the wires are gonna run through the building. Um, the heat trace at gutters. Again, this was, uh, Tim just paying attention to what was going on, knowing how our buildings function, and he concluded that we had to have some kind of heat to keep things, uh, from fully freezing out.
These are in the actual gutters?
Exterior from the north side, right.
Okay.
And, and really, uh, it doesn't take much, and we're at eighty thousand eight fifty-three.
Okay, questions? Anyone? Further discussion or action? Thank you for the rundown of it.
Absolutely.
Got a motion for approval?
Yes.
Oh, bro.
Mr. Chairman, before you can say it, but if the motion would also include, would, would note that we are not adding any working days to the contract by approval of the change order, and that the previous completion date of September twenty-fifth remains intact at this point, unless they tell it to otherwise.
Oh, I have that on.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Starting a further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the, uh, allowing the, uh, eighty thousand eight fifty-three will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, that's what I have for you at this point, with the exception of whatever I'm giving you.
Could you back that again?
Do what? Yes, I did, and thank you for the reminder. If I may just have a couple of seconds to gather some thoughts here. We have, uh, in preceding meetings, we have discussed the hierarchy of a medical service that we're, uh, now providing for our, um, inmates. That hierarchy involves a nurse, a physician's assistant, and ultimately, a physician who oversees, uh, that process. Each of those positions was, uh, requiring medical malpractice insurance, which is a specific insurance that the current carrier does not afford. We have, uh, had the opportunity to secure medical malpractice insurance for the nurse and for the physician's assistant. The physician elected to add a rider onto his existing policy. In order for that to be cost-effective, in other words, for him to make some money working for us, he needed, uh, X number of dollars. That amount, I am requesting to be added to his, uh, paycheck by way of a stipend that I believe to be, we sell me Brenda, was a hundred and fifty-two, a hundred and fifty-two dollars, uh, per paper.
Okay.
We cannot, I might add, cannot function without it. Clearly, we have a choice by way of a vote, but this is something that we, we have to have in order to provide the medical services.
And that will be effective July first. That's when he started working, and it'll run through December twenty-eight, twenty-four. That's when we will re-address the, um, wages for twenty-twenty-five, so if it goes up or whatever, then we will address that per diem when we address the sheriff or the deputies and the jailers per diem at that same time.
Okay, just part of our learning curve.
Yeah.
Right, and I might add, uh, for what value it holds, that that is significantly less than what we had anticipated. This is an amount which equals, uh, approximately three thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars a year.
Motion to approve the additional stipend.
And my lifeline back.
Did you second that, uh, Mr. Gent?
Yes, I did.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the, the, uh, end cost. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Need to get your thumb up higher, Brandon. You're under the table, buddy. Thank you. All right.
Mr. Chairman, uh, pending the approval of Dr. Alka and Brenda, I believe that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Uh, Brenda, I think we can go ahead and have your public hearing. This is on resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven. A petition to vacate a portion of the section line.
Yeah, so this, um, vacation was, um, you approved a final plat for the Clines and the Lindley's, um, a few months ago. And, uh, the filing of that final plat was contingent upon the vacation of this section line, and so that is what this is, uh, bringing forth is the vacation of this section line.
There's a structure of the section line, right?
This isn't claims property. Oh, it isn't? No, this is Kutra and Lindley. Oh, my bad. Kutra, sorry. I just, sorry. I brought, and Lindley. And I brought the preliminary that you guys approved. If, this one was denied because the final plat was denied because we found that there was a structure sitting in the section line. So the board at that time said, we're gonna deny the final plat until such time that the section line process gets done, so that's what they're doing right now. Thank you, because we found that, because we were going through the preliminary plat process.
So this is public hearing? Okay, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the body of the audience who would like to speak for or against this, this is the opportunity, and if you would please stand and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone in the body of the audience or online that would like to speak to this? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and offer to the board for discussion or action. Mr. Sleep. Is there any, um, one and the other, any concern by the line numbers there that's going up the section line?
Richard, I, I think that the residents are gonna access their properties by Legend Lane, and I think this track three looks like they access their property from an easement off of Legends Lane. And then I think going what, to the, to the, to the west there, looks like it's an H lot, so I think that's probably a, uh, D O T property there. So it's not obvious to me that there's anybody that's impacted by the vacation of the section line other than track three, the applicants.
Thank you. Can you get Brandon back on, please? Did you have any questions, Commissioner Flanagan?
I do not. This one looks real straightforward to me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
You guys assign them, or you just leave out?
Here's the rub. All right. Mr. B, sir. Please come forward, and you have the floor.
Good morning.
Morning.
We've got a few permits to, uh, to consider today. First, I've got two of them that are, they're together. They're from the city of Belle Fouch, and Belle Fouch is wanting to improve their, their antiquated water system, uh, starting at the Brookview, the head, the headwaters of their water system, so. Uh, they're starting with two road crossings, one on Camp Copper and one on, um, both crossings are gonna be, uh, the bore pits will be outside the right-of-way, and, uh, it'll be cased. Uh, their original plan did not call for casing. I did request that they case the water line. It is a, it is a high-pressure water line for water, a hundred and sixty P S I in a large.
Wow.
I did request that they case that, so with that being said, uh, pending any kind of, uh, bonding issues that you guys are wanting to do, I mean, this is another government entity, so. I think in the past, we've always, uh, waived any bonding with other government entities, so I, I recommend the approval of this permit.
I'm sure they'll do well. It's a valuable resource for them.
Yeah, their water system, I think they said nineteen twenty-two is when the water, water lines were installed.
You're recommending, um, that the, uh, put a pipeline in under the road too?
I'm, I'm recommending that they case their waters and under the road, that's correct, and their bore pits to be outside the right-of-way, which they've agreed to.
Okay.
And I've noted that on the permit.
Kent, what's your pleasure on it? I'll move with all of the recommendations.
Second.
Kent, we have a motion in a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried.
That was absolutely the goal, right?
Yep.
Um, second is, this is in the city of St. Ange, the township of St. Ange. They have a certain number of lots in the town. Each lot is, uh, permitted one water hookup. This is a particular lot that has never had construction on it. They're now gonna, they're going to allow a, a tiny home on it, is what it sounded like to me, and they want to put water in sewer. The city of St. Ange has granted them a hookup feed, or a hookup to their water and sewer, uh, but it is in our right-of-way of St. Ange. I did finally get the correct person that owns the lot to, to submit the application, and I would recommend also that we allow them to hook to the city, to the township of St. Ange, to water in the sewer.
Move, follow the recommendation. Kent, we have a motion in a second, follow the recommendation. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next, we have a approach permit. This is for a piece of property that, uh, was replatted recently. The plat was approved. This is right across from the, the pellet plant there on the McRiggen Road. I did go out and inspect the site. Originally, the plan was to have the, uh, the approach line up with the, uh, approach across the street that goes into the mill. And it will not line up. There's a power pole in the middle of it on the opposite side of the road. The applicant has requested that the approach be moved down to the center of his property. And kind of interestingly enough, we had a, our meeting at our master transportation plan, uh, our, uh, our engineer recommends, you know, in the, going forward, that we don't allow that we don't allow negative access approaches, negative offset intersections. This would create a negative offset intersection if we try to make them line up with the intersection across the road. You know, because, without moving a power pole in its large power line. So to go with a positive offset intersection, which would be what he's requesting. So with that being said, I, I would, I would recommend that we approve the, the location of the approach that he's requesting.
I'll move with all the recommendation.
Second.
Kent, we have a motion in a second for, to allow driveway. All of those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
May I ask one question? Is there any difference on approaches between residential and commercial?
Uh, yeah, there is a width, there is a width difference.
And this is residential?
This is for residential. He did make the comment, though, that he may in the future try to split that lot and put some smaller units on. And I requested that he make it a wider approach. So that in the future, if it becomes a commercial approach, if he gets it somehow rezoned through you people, that it would be compliant. He agreed to that. I also, you know, made him, on the permit, I requested that he put some sort of material that doesn't track onto our roads.
Okay.
I've been asking people on our paved roads to pave their approaches. That hasn't worked real well because the different times they've built it, and if it's in the winter, they can't pave. And to come back later and pave them, yeah, they could do that. My, my, my request is now, I just kind of cleaned it up a little bit, is to request that surface of the approach will be constructed of material so there is no transfer of debris to the, the adjacent road.
Lime stone or millings or something like that?
Millings, you know, millings would be the option there, I guess. But something that's not, you know, larger rocks or mud or anything like that.
Okay.
He's agreed to all of the, all of the conditions of that.
Okay, thank you.
And then next, we've got the bike race that's going to be held September the first. We've already received, I believe, the, this is for the Dakota Five-O. I think we've already, we did receive the insurance certificate. The only thing we hadn't, they hadn't actually done the MOU for that. They have sent that now. But there is a request on the board. They're wanting us to close the road on September the first, starting at seven in the morning until four in the afternoon. We've never closed the road.
Which road?
They want to close Hill Street and North Tinton. We've never closed a road in the past for this. What we have done, we have put our sign boards up, warning people, you know, that there was a bike race in progress. We've done that in the past. And I guess we would offer that service again as well.
I would certainly be against closing it.
My recommendation to them was if they had a plan of closing it, to present their plan of closure, which they have not done this time. Like I said, we've never closed a road and, and I don't, I don't even know that we have anything in place to transfer the authority for us as the highway department or the county commission to transfer that authority to close a road to a private entity.
So that's a busy road. There's quite a few people accessing it that live there.
It is a busy road. Anyway, I did offer our services as far as putting up the sign boards again during that event, you know, to warn people. Anything else? If you guys have any plans, I mean, we'd certainly entertain those.
We need a motion to approve the use of it?
I think you'd assign the MOU.
Okay.
So there was nothing in MOU about closing the road, was there? There is not. So I move that we assign the MOU for the, for the road.
Second. Kent, we have a motion in a second to ask the chairman to sign the memorandum of understanding. Any further, Commissioner Slate?
Barry Jewitt requests all these things.
Yes, Barry Jewitt.
Barry Jewitt.
Yep, yep, he's the one that requested it.
Kent, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And lastly, I guess the only thing I have last is this grant we were accepted. Given that's VW grant to purchase this truck that we were talking about. Maybe this would be something that would be more appropriate for our later meeting during the budget. I don't know. That's up to you guys. If we do accept this grant, we have to have it returned to, to the state by August the sixteenth. So if you guys want to discuss it now, we can. If you want to wait until the budget portion of this meeting, we can go that route too. This is a forty-five percent grant for this truck. So it really kind of hinges on us buying a truck, you know, which is kind of part of my budget request. So I'll leave that up to you guys if you want to wait till later to discuss this or if you want to discuss it a little bit more now.
Why don't we just do it during the budget?
Can, can, and we can authorize it at that time if we need to, right Bruce? During the budget hearing? Okay, we'll wait till then.
Sounds good.
Just don't forget it.
What else?
Uh, that's all I have for stuff that needs your approval. I did want to just touch base on our hand of structure that we, we put in. That we did get, we got that replaced. We got it replaced in less than a week. The contractor that did the work never ceases to amaze me because he promised he would do it in three days and his work was done in three days. Our work was done the next day and we opened that Friday morning. It's, it's nice, it's smooth.
I've heard some of the results.
Well, I did get, I have not received the bill yet for the actual structure from Rinker, which, but I do have, when Forterra was the name of the company, I do have the purchase agreement that Alan Bonham was signed and that was for forty thousand and sixty dollars. There's no indication that that has changed. I don't think they can change it. We had an agreement. In fact, I was told that it would be less. There was going to be some rebate because they, one of, one of the concrete planks was four inches shorter. So, which did not affect the structure any. It did, it did create the contractor a little headache field fitting it. So here and there, we, we haven't got that bill yet, but I, I expect that in the future. We did get the billing and I don't know if you've seen that. When I did this, it was for forty-three thousand eight fifty-six. And that was the contractor's, you know, bill to put the structure in. That included rental to excavators, a mini excavator. That does not include what we've spent on asphalt and gravel, which is roughly five thousand dollars is what the county has into asphalt and gravel. So I think the whole thing's still going to come in under the ninety thousand dollar mark. We'll see when we get the rest of the billing for that.
I do have one crazy question for you. If someone puts up hay in the county roadway, road ditches and bales it up and leaves a bunch of broken bales in the ditch and just leaves them, can anything be done?
Yeah, yeah, they can't. You're not supposed to leave things in the, in the right of way.
Well, I haven't done the Homestead Road, just for the record.
We do not, we do not give anybody permission to cut hay in the right of way. We're not in the enforcement business. We don't go out and stop people when they are. We, we ask people when they call and complain about the road ditches need mowing. We're going to go out and mow it with our forty inch pulling tractor. We recommend and we tell them to not do that. We would rather they not be up on the edge of our roads or in our right of way, creating a hazard to others and themselves.
Well, there was an individual up on that particular road that went ahead and cut the ditches. And they're pretty narrow and steep, but they done it anyway. And when they baled it, they broke several bales and just left them. So just let you know.
Well, I mean, we can go out and clean them up a little bit.
We shouldn't have to clean them up.
Well, we shouldn't have to, but I don't know who will, I guess.
Would that mower, if you went over it with the county mower, would it chew it up?
It would.
Okay.
Chew about anything up.
All right.
Chew up signs or anything else on the mower.
Is there not a good reason to write a letter to this individual and tell him not to do it again?
Well, I think that, that would not be out of line. I did speak with somebody that called and asked, feeling it might be the same person, but
It is.
He asked if, if he had, if he could get permission to mow and bale the road ditches, which I told him, no, that we would not offer that permission. We don't do that. So again, I told him, we're not in the enforcement business, but we ask that people do not.
Well, I, I knew that there'd be a mess. I told the individual to stay away from my property, but it didn't happen. Anyway, thank you for everything, sir. Do you have anything else?
I do not.
Mr. Chairman, there was an email from an individual concerned about speed on McGuigan Road. I think they were just claiming that there was about people driving seventy miles an hour on McGuigan Road and he wanted more speed limit signs, as I recall.
You forwarded that to me. We have signs on each end of that section. It's the, the section question's a thirty-five mile an hour zone and it's roughly a mile long. A sign on each end is, is kind of the standard of a road like that or intersecting roads, not driveways. You know, there are people that would like a sign at every driveway. That's not, that's not practical.
For those that are going to exceed the speed limit aren't going to pay any attention to more signs. So, all right, thank you.
I also have some budget stuff. If you guys want a copy of it upfront, if you have time to look at it, I've passed it out to you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Amber, we can, I see you've got a public hearing at nine. It's not nine, but we've got a few other things that we can handle. All right. Does anyone need a break? Brenda, anybody? Everybody's good?
Yep.
Okay. Do you see issues with it?
No, I can give you some explanation, I guess, with it.
Well, we can wait. Pardon? We're just going to take a break until nine. Out of fairness, we'll wait. Okay. It is 9:00 a.m. Time and place for board discussion, action on. We got a recesses county commissioners and convene a. Board of adjustment. Thank you, sir. So I would entertain a motion for that to begin with.
I'll move we do it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for two recesses county commissioners and convene a board of adjustment. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And this is for a public hearing variance 212. Kerwin Holdings. Amber, you want to take it from here?
So this is the same property that you guys actually issued a variance on. The structure that sits out there now. This is along Boulder Canyon and Matson Lane. I don't even know what used to sit there a long time ago, but he, he kind of put a lot of gravel in, started taking some dirt out. He needed to get a building permit for a second structure, just like the one that's there. It's a storage building for all of this stuff in Deadwood here. And he, just because of just the land and terrain and everything, the place that is the best place to put it would be right in line with the old, the other structure that you guys already issued a variance on. But this variance is gonna be from the highway side. So he can't meet a 25 foot setback from the DOT side away, but if you look at the terrain there, it's a real steep incline there between the actual highway and this property. And he has leveled it out, but it just doesn't work to fit in there the way that he's trying to make it fit. He would like to have it the structure size that he is. Ultimately, I didn't see a real big issue with this particular one. I would say it meets the requirements because of the topography and the narrowness of kind of an odd shaped lot. And he is putting it behind the existing structure, so it's not like he's trying to get closer to Matson Lane.
There's a canyon. All right, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the bottom of the audience that would like to speak for or against this, please stand, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone in the room or online that would like to speak to this? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and offer to the board for discussion or action.
If the chairman, if I may, in the packets I included the variance request criteria. Just to carve a quick like, if you would incorporate that into your motion. To approve, there must be a finding that the variance would not be injurious to the neighborhood or detrimental to the public interest or welfare. To approve, there must be a finding of special certain conditions such that because of a particular feature of the property or because of some extraordinary or exceptional situation on the property, a variance is necessary. And also to be considered as water denial, the variance would create a peculiar and exceptional practical difficulty.
Okay, Commissioner Flanagan, did you have your hand up, sir?
I didn't, but I do have a few comments.
Okay.
I fail to see the hardship. He can build that building 60 by 80 and meet all the setbacks just fine.
All right, and what does Flanagan zoning do?
They recommended approval. Listing that they felt that it would not be injurious to the neighborhood or detrimental to the public interest to find that there are special conditions with the topography of the property.
Okay, Commissioner Jennings.
So I was at the Flanagan zoning meeting when this was discussed. There's no doubt that I have that the landowner cannot excavate more to fit this building in. And it may not be at risk to the highway with the location that it's in, but it still comes down to the fact that he's got too big of a building for the lot. And that's what I'm hoping to, and so I've ordered against that of finding and zoning and not support this time.
Okay, further discussion?
And I've had second thoughts since then and would agree with the 60 by 80 building.
Please, Chairman, remind her that this would require a super majority as well. To what before or five.
All right. Do we have a motion before us? I'll move we deny the request. Okay, sorry. We have a motion in a second for denial. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is it fair to say then that based upon Commissioner Flanagan's comments that, that special conditions don't exist? And that denial does not create a peculiar or exceptional practical difficulty for the landowner? And that's incorporated into the motion?
Yeah, I'll do that. Okay, looks like that's agreeable. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those, we're gonna do a roll call vote, Brenda. All those in favor of the denial? Will say aye.
Yes.
Just go.
Aye.
Sleep.
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Unanimous motion. All right. Yes, we need to come back and reconvene. Reconvene?
Vacate the board of adjustment and reconvene the county commissioner.
Adjourn?
Adjourn?
Is that the word?
Adjourn. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn as board of adjustment and reconvene as county commissioners. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right.
We can do the two memorandum agreements.
Oh, okay.
If you want, they're not coming. So, the other two, so we have two different ones, and we've been doing these with Gene Pesca with Maitland Partners up in Paradise Acres for. He has been doing memorandum of agreements, and then there's also a copy of their bond through the bonding company as well as the letter from, oh geez, Scichello, Scichello. He is the one that kind of has been doing the work and giving estimates and stuff on it. So what they would like to do is just have a memorandum of agreement and the bond on lot 127 and lot 131. And the other one would be lot 133. They're doing them as separate because their hope is that as they get completed, they can just, you know, let them go versus one big. So we have two different ones.
All right.
So explain again while they're doing that on a per lot basis instead of a development?
Um, just because they're actively working as they're doing it, so I think just bond wise, it just costs money to have a bond. I think so if you don't have as many probably acres or something, I'm not sure how the bonding company does it. But I'm assuming it's based on how much money they're putting up. But I think it's just cheaper than to do the whole development since he's not really selling lots as quickly as he has in the past. I will tell you as a precursor to the August 13th meeting. Mr. Pesca is gonna have some questions for you as to related to the Maitland bridge stuff that's going on. Scichello has told him that he is not comfortable with taking the taking equipment through that area right now. I don't quite understand it.
Through the bypass after it's done?
Yeah, well, right now, as it sits, he's not comfortable getting his equipment through there. So that's why he hasn't been able to complete some of this stuff. He's gonna be here to talk to you about that. So just as a, it's causing some issues with this, because I guess he can't come from this direction.
Okay.
I don't know. So I'm just giving you a heads up that that he will be here at the next meeting for that.
Right. Can he go up his driveway? Driveway? Can he go up his driveway or is it somewhere else where he's?
No, he's trying to get to Paradise Acres, and Scichello can't get through on this side. I don't. I don't know why, but he can't. I don't know if it's.
Pushbacks.
I would assume, so he can't get through on this side and he can't get through on the other side, and this is stuck kind of right in the middle.
Well, I forgot to ask John. I mean, they're all ready to put that bypass in.
Yeah, I think last night I talked to John last week. He was waiting on some board service stuff.
Yep, aren't we waiting on state stuff?
Oral force permit.
Yeah, thank you, Brenda. So, so we need a motion on these memorandums of?
Yeah, yep.
What's your pleasure on the MLUs?
Move to approve the chairman to sign the memorandum of agreement.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to allow the chairman to sign. No further discussion. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Chairman, you're running a little bit ahead, so I wouldn't have breath of equalization for the add-ons. I see other folks are here too, but.
Well, Mr. Teasom's here, and it's almost time for, for him.
So we did the add-ons quick, like?
Sure. Hey, Brett.
So there are two properties that we incorrectly coded the thing St. Glas on basically, and so when we sent out assessment notices in March or late February, their value, that value wasn't on even though their buildings were there. We discovered these while I was doing abstract checking type stuff. And so I sent out letters to both of the owners on July 1st and told them that this would be the meeting that we'd be discussing that. Matthew Johnson and Travis Lantus. And told them, you know, described, I think he got the letters, described the situation and that we were adding on their values. So it's kind of an informational thing for you to know that we're, and also a chance for them to come here if they decided to.
So we don't have to take any action?
I would.
I would, yeah.
Because it's, it's kind of a mended property, you know, because this won't be till January of '25 adding it on, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And both landowners knew about today and had the opportunity to come?
It was in the letter that this, that we, you know, had my number so they could call and see when it was. I mean, as far as time wise, but the date was on for sure. I said this is.
Well, that's not till 10:15, so.
No, neither of them called.
Okay.
Went to, he didn't call to ask.
Okay.
Do you need separate motions?
Yeah.
Johnson and.
Yeah. It's due to Johnson.
That we add the value of the storage sheds on to Mr. Johnson's access.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of Matt Johnson's. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And what was the other one?
We got the trust plans, yeah.
Okay.
So I'd move that we add the, have the mobile home hookup, I believe, and actual home hookup.
A mobile home. We had the hookup. We didn't have the mobile home.
I have the trust.
I'll second that as well. Okay, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Brett. Mr. Teasom, I think it's close enough for you to come on up. You have the floor, sir.
Okay, thank you. Morning, I'm Mark Teasom. I'm with Home State Mining Company. And I'm gonna be giving the Home State Richmond Hill annual reports today. Start with the Home State report.
Okay.
The Home State combined Home State Richmond Hill employment for 2023 was eight FTEs plus four full-time contract employees and one part-time employee. Our 2023 contributions were approximately $42,000. Reclamation has been completed at the Waste Rock facilities. As of the end of 2023, 555 acres have been released. There's about 87 remaining acres left, of which all reclamation has been completed on all of them. Most of it is mature reclamation. We just haven't gotten it released yet. There have been no complaints in 2023 and no technical revisions under this mining permit during the year. 2023 activities. We have the option agreement with Dakota Gold. I'm sure most of you have heard about this. That we entered into that in 2021 for Dakota Gold to acquire the Home State and/or Richmond Hill properties. The Home State and Richmond Hill options have both been extended for 18 more months than originally agreed upon. Dakota Gold may exercise those options on or before March 7th, 2026. 2023 monitoring. Monitoring in 2023 continues to show the surface water around the mine site remains excellent. It's all our quality standards. The Blacktail Water Treatment Plant treats water emanating from the toes of the soft bed in the East Waste Rock facilities. Water Treatment Plant System removes both selenium and total dissolved solids, of which most of it is sulfates from the water prior to discharging to Deadwood Creek. Blacktail Water Treatment Plant discharge consistently meets permitted effluent limits and surface water quality standards. Instream selenium and TDS levels are well below the surface water quality standards and have been since the water treatment plant began in operation in 2006. With regard to geotechnical monitoring, Home State employs multiple displacement monitoring techniques. We use survey monuments of prisms on much of the land using robotic total station and GPS methods. We have prismometers that measure the water levels in the Waste Rock facilities to make sure they're not building up in there. We have inclinometers to measure movements at depth. We do visual inspections of all of the areas for any different kinds of surface expression of settlement. And we use satellite monitoring, a radar type system that covers pretty much our entire property. The open cut prisms and survey monuments, baseline and current survey is performed in South Dakota state plane coordinates using robotic total station instruments. The new train line movements, movement rates developed for survey monuments and prisms during October of '23 review indicated no significant movement from prior monitoring. The open cut east block, this is the area that failed in June of 2019. The entire area is contained within the pit boundary on home state controlled property. Measurements don't indicate any.
Okay, Brett.
Thank you. So there are two properties that we incorrectly coded the thing. St. Glas on basically. And so when we sent out assessment notices in March or late February, their value, that value wasn't on even though their buildings were there. Uh, we discovered these while I was doing abstract checking type stuff. And so I sent out letters to both of the owners um, on July first and told them that this would be the meeting that we'd be discussing that. Uh, Matthew Johnson and Travis Lantus. And told them, you know, described, I think he got the letters, described the situation and that we were adding on their values. So it's kind of an informational thing for, for you to know that we're, and also a chance for them to come here if they decided to.
So we don't have to take any action?
I, I would.
I would, yeah.
Because it's, it's kind of a mended property.
Yeah.
You know, because this won't be till January of twenty-five adding it on. So. Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And both landowners knew about today and had the opportunity to come?
It was in the letter that this, that we, um, you know, had my number so they could call and see when it was. I mean, as far as time wise, but the date was on for sure. I said, this is.
Well, that's not till ten fifteen, so.
No, neither of them called.
Okay.
So they went to, they didn't call to ask.
Okay.
Do you need separate motions?
Yeah.
Johnson and.
Yeah.
It's due to Johnson.
That we add the value of the storage sheds on to Mr. Johnson's access.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of Matt Johnson's. Uh, although some favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And what was the other one?
Landis.
Okay.
So I'd move that we add the, uh, have the mobile home hookup, I believe, and actual home hookup.
A mobile home. We had the hookup. We didn't have the mobile home.
I trust. Personal.
I'll second that as well.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Mr. Teasom, I think it's, it's close enough for you to come on up. You have the floor, sir.
Okay, thank you. Morning, I'm Mark Teasom. I'm with Home State Mining Company. And I'm going to be giving the Home State Richmond Hill annual reports today. Start with the Home State report.
Okay.
Um, the Home State combined Home State Richmond Hill employment for two thousand and twenty-three was eight FTEs plus four full-time contract employees and one part-time co- employee. Um, our twenty twenty-three contributions were approximately forty-two thousand dollars. Reclamation has been completed at the waste rock facilities. As of the end of two thousand and twenty-three, five hundred fifty-five acres have been released. There's about eighty-seven remaining acres left, of which all reclamation has been completed on a whole of them. Uh, most of it is mature reclamation. Um, we just haven't gotten it released yet. There have been no complaints in two thousand and twenty-three and no technical revisions under this mining permit during the year. Two thousand and twenty-three activities. Um, we have the option agreement with Dakota Gold. I'm sure most of you have heard about this, um, that we entered into that in two thousand and twenty-one for Dakota Gold to acquire the Home State and/or Richmond Hill properties. Uh, the Home State and Richmond Hill options have both been extended, uh, for eighteen more months than originally agreed upon. Dakota Gold may exercise those options on or before March seventh, two thousand and twenty-six. Two thousand and twenty-three monitoring. Monitoring in two thousand and twenty-three continues to show the surface water around the mine site remains excellent. It's all our quality standards. The Black Dell Water Treatment Plant treats water emanating from the toes of the soft bed in the East Waste Rock Facilities. Water Treatment Plant System removes both selenium and total dissolved solids, of which most of it is sulfates uh, from the water prior to discharging to Deadwood Creek. Black Dell Water Treatment Plant discharge continue, continue consistently meets permitted effluent limits and service water quality standards. Instream selenium and TDS levels are well below the surface water quality standards and have been since the water treatment plant began in operation in two thousand and six. With regard to geotechnical monitoring, Home State employs multiple displacement monitoring techniques. We use survey monuments of prisms, uh, on much of the land, um, using robotic total station and GPS methods. We have prismeters that measure the water levels in the waste rock facilities to make sure they're not building up in there. Um, we have inclinometers to measure movements at depth. We do visual inspections of all of the areas for any different kinds of surface expression of settlement. And we use a satellite, um, monitoring, a radar-type system that, uh, covers pretty much our entire property. The open cut prisms and survey monuments, uh, baseline and current survey is performed in South Dakota state plane coordinates using robotic total station instruments. The new trend line movements, movement rates developed for survey ma- monuments and prisms during October of twenty-three review indicated no significant movement from prior monitoring. The open cut east block, um, this is the area that failed in June of two thousand and nineteen. Uh, the entire area is contained within the pit boundary on home state controlled property. Measurements don't indicate any new areas of instability or significant slope enlargement of existing instability. The remaining crest, uh, there are no indications of any recent movements that could uh, represent a potential for substantial slope failures. The long baseline neutrino facility excavation, um, that rock from that project went into the open cut. And disposal of the rock started in May of twenty-one, uh, was brought over via the, that huge, um, conveyor system from the Ross head wrang over to the, over to the south edge of the open cut. Uh, they were permitted for eight hundred seventy-five thousand tons and ended up conveying about eight hundred twenty thousand tons altogether. Um, the pile is about eight, five hundred sixty feet vertical. We have prisms on either side of the, of the pile that indicated thing on that south wall is stable. Survey monuments, um, new trend line movements developed in October twenty-three review indicate no significant movement from prior monitoring. And the physometers are showing no significant buildup of water in the waste rock facilities. Inclinometers have indicated no significant changes since previous monitoring. And this is visual inspection show no significant areas of instability. The satellite or, uh, in our monitoring, um, indicates that the dump is behaving as expected with no, uh, significant issues. Our projects for this year at Home State are pretty simple. Just continue our water treatment agreement with South Dakota Science and Tech Authority and and continue our water treatment, uh, of the water from the toes of the East Waste Rock Facility and Soft Bed Waste Rock Facility. Any questions on that one?
Is there a timeframe? How long is left to monitor that water or is that just in perpetuity?
Well, you, the selenium has actually been coming down somewhat since we started in two thousand and six. And so it's all dependent on the water quality as time goes. Um, and standards change from time to time, um, as far as what, whether they decide is an important level. Um, and so it's hard to say, but, um, it'll be going on for a while.
Bruce.
Mark, in the open cut, if there's been subsidence in there, it doesn't really matter, does it? Or does it matter only to the extent that some other kind of rock would be exposed to the, to moisture? Uh, but the whole thing caved in, who cares?
The, the concern would be the boundary, right? And right now, um, you know, everything's located on home state property and we monitor and everything like that. Nobody is allowed to go into the, into the, um, open cut or anything like that. Um, the thing is that we just need to continue to monitor. We need to be able to see when we have these smaller, uh, displacements, slides and things. But, uh, it's not really a matter of exposing other rock. Um, it's just a safety issue. Keep an eye on.
Okay.
All right, the Richmond Hill Mine. Um, total released acres is two hundred and sixty-two, um, with, uh, seventy-five remaining acres, of which most of it is used for water treatment facilities, about seventy-one acres of it. And we have, um, three point seven six acres of reclaimed, uh, land, um, that I'll talk about a little bit more further in the presentation. We had no complaints in two thousand and twenty-three and a technical revision, uh, to the mine permit uh, was submitted to install a new primary liner in the Richmond Hill Storage Pond. And, um, I'll talk about that as well. Twenty twenty-three activities, very, uh, I've already talked about the option agreement and, um, that matches up with the March seventh date with Home State. So I'm going to go back to twenty-one, twenty-two for just a second. Um, in preparation for the new liner in the, in the storage pond, um, we pumped, uh, and dug out a lot of sludge that had accumulated in there over the years. And, um, this pond that we're talking about is, um, clear at the north end of that left-hand aerial there. Uh, it's the large this one here. It's seventy-eight million gallons capacity. And the sludge was removed in preparation for the repairs and installation of the new primary liner. And it was deposited in the onsite sledge pond, which on the right-hand photo there is the furthest of the three away from the shot there. We removed approximately eight thousand cubic yards during those two years. So, uh, we also, we, once we got the sludge out, we, um, the damaged liner from the previous winter and the liner that was damaged trying to get all of the sludge out was repaired. Uh, and, um, that included repairs on both the slope and the slope areas in the bottom of the pond. We ended up replacing about two hundred thousand square feet of liner. And this is the original liner that was still in.
So do you just put the new liner over the old one?
Yep.
Okay.
So the installation, the first step was to improve our access around the pond and dig a new anchor trench to anchor the, the new liner. A geo net, sump and pipe were installed between the existing and new liners to remove any trapped water. The geo net installed in the bottom, was installed in the bottom and in the strike pattern on the slope should facilitate drainage into the sump. Then the final trench work was done and textured liner was used for both employee safety and improved wildlife egress. We've got a larger wildlife exclusion fence around these facilities, uh, but occasionally you would get a deer or something like that in there. This will, will help them to be able to walk out of there. Um, we, just, um, a couple of, uh, photos of the completed pond liner system, the southeast view there. And, um, that's kind of shooting back towards the, uh, other ponds and the leach beds. And then, uh, on the right is the northwest view. That may be the bottom of the pond. Then we hydro seeded and hydro mulched, um, the access area around the pond. So, um, the other reclamation project, uh, one of the other reclamation projects that we did were, was for the discharge ponds. These ponds were, um, sort of a, uh, they were installed originally to for the water treatment plant, uh, to batch the water before discharging. And they'd be, pretty much became obsolete after a few years and we were able to, to, uh, do the water treatment without them. And so it was time to reclaim them. The one on the left is an upper pond. These are both in the same little draw. Uh, the one on the right pond two is the lower of the two ponds. We'd already taken out the plastic liners out of these. So we, first step was to remove the pond embankments. Uh, that consisted mostly of, uh, topsoil, uh, because they were lying ponds. They just used topsoil to, um, build the berms and the, and the ponds. Um, so we took this topsoil over to another project that we had, which was the reclamation of the old sludge basin. And we used that as topsoil over there, cover material. Uh, what next? It was graded to allow proper drainage from the area and hydro seeded, uh, with the approved seed mix and mulch. So it was reclamation of the sludge basin. Um, this sludge basin was, was used for a number of years and then now we use the sludge basin that's down by the water treatment plant that I pointed out in that one photo. Um, so this is pretty much full and closed.
When you remove the liner, is it, is that old liner considered contaminated?
No, it's not.
So it's not hard to dispose of?
Well, it's, we take it out of there and what we've done in the past is to shred it.
Okay.
And then haul it to the landfill.
Thank you.
Um, the material from the discharge pond reclamation project was halted the, the sludge pond for cover material. And soil was pushed across the sludge basin and, and graded to a minimum of one and a half percent slope for proper drainage. It was covered with a minimum of three feet of fill. And the cover ties nicely into the existing embankment on the northwest sides and slope to promote drainage. Reclaimed sludge basin was seeded with the approved reclamation seed mix and hydro mulched. Uh, one other project that we had was we replaced the old, uh, reverse osmosis unit for our water treatment plant. This is more of a built to, um, built to fit. Built to purpose RO. Um, it's going to be much more efficient for us, um, much better. And we're hoping that it's going to work a little bit more better in the pool of weather. Gives us more operational flexibility that way. Water management and treatment. Uh, the, for the leach beds and ponds, um, the, we have a biological water treatment plant, uh, for selenium treatment. We operated that biological plant with the RO, discharging about seventeen point seven million gallons during the year. And we operated the biological water treatment plant independently over the layer months in two thousand and twenty-three, discharging another one point eight million gallons. We have, um, had about approximately ten point nine million gallons of water in our treatment ponds, uh, at the beginning of April. I think we've got now just over sixteen million, which is pretty normal. Uh, we're through the, the spring now and those, those levels will start to drop as we start, uh, treating that water, that extra water. Uh, leach bed effluent flows averaged approximately twenty-six gallons per minute in two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, the leach bed effluent flows in two thousand and twenty-three will be modestly higher than two thousand and twenty-two average flows of twenty-five gallons per minute. The precipitation was above average in two thousand and twenty-three, resulting in slightly higher infiltration rates of the leach beds. Uh, precipitation was twenty-three point five inches in two thousand and twenty-two and thirty, almost thirty-four inches in two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, for Spruce Gulch, uh, this is the reclaimed site of the Waste Rock Disposal Facility. Our water treatment includes pH adjustment with sodium hydroxide as needed and the nearby South Gulch waters pump to Spruce Gulch. Also for treatment, their two waters are homing and treated. Monitoring activities. The two thousand and twenty-three backfill monitoring capping system continues to indicate that the cap is functioning much better than design expectations and leach bed capping system can, continues to perform well, limiting infiltration. Site-wide water quality monitoring, water quality at the site is generally stable or improving, improving. William Patrick Creek Water Quality Monitoring confirms there are no impacts from the Richmond Hill Mine. Monitoring is continuing in site-specific performance criteria. We're developing consultation with D A and R improvement board to ensure continued protection of the environment in post-closure. Our plans, continue water treatment and continue in getting monitoring activities. Any questions?
All right. Thank you. Any questions for anyone? All right. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thanks.
All right. Melanie. Welcome. Right on time. Go to the floor.
I have, um, a commissioning report to give for May and June. Um, so young. Um, I just wanted to come by and say hi. I think it's been about two months since I stopped by. We are less than a week out from there. That's very exciting. Some things that have been going on are in June, we had our horse show. We had the largest turnout actually with state of kids. So it's pretty awesome. We had seventeen kids wear this suit. Um, we also, my dog program that I'm working on is really taking off. We have eight kids that are super committed and they're wanting to continue to do that and are actually wanting to go on to compete at the state level um, in Rapid City, which is exciting. We, um, also have been, I've been doing a lot of trainings and, um, I'm on the Positive Youth Development Committee uh, with the state. So we've been working on getting some brochures out to the county about allergy friendly and disability friendly programs. Today is my first day back from PTO. I have ten days off, so trying to remember it all. It's a little rusty on the brain, but getting back into it. Um, and you guys are more than welcome to join us at the fair. I did also raise some posters. If you guys had any where you wanted to post them, but you haven't seen them posted yet. If not, that's fine too. We've been sending the kids out and I've been going out posting them. Our fair starts on Monday with the horse show, um, and then we'll go all the way to Saturday ending with the rodeo. Do you guys have any questions for me?
What, what do they do with it, with the dog work? I just can see there's a still upon, but actually still.
So they are working on identifying, um, there's five parts to it. So the first part is identifying, um, body language. So they're learning about what the tail movements be and where the ear positions are, where their lips are and things like that. Tell if the dog is aggressive, nervous, um, happy. That's part one. Part two is body identification. So identifying the parts of the dog. Um, and number three is, um, tool identification. So grooming tools, show tools, different things like that. Part four is, um, oh, breed identification. And then part five, uh, is the actual showing of the dog. Doing.
All you need, Eric, is a pork chop for a happy dog.
We are currently working on the dog program on showmanship. Um, our dog show is going to be this Thursday during the county fair level. Um, as well as next Friday, that we're offering early, a lot of our kids show three or four animals on Friday. Um, and then after that, we're going to start working on agility. A lot of the kids are very interested in that. Um, we have a volunteer that has all the agility supplies, so the kids are super excited to get going on that.
All right. Any questions?
May I have a poster, please?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'll take one as well.
Okay. There are some.
Thank you.
On the bulletin boards here too.
All right. Thank you.
Did you find that she was still being on PTO right beside her?
Yeah, I'm about to find out today. I haven't been to the office yet. This is my first stop of the day. Yeah, I already had the trip made before it turned dark. So I was like, well, we're going to see how this goes. Thank you guys. I'm hoping it'll go through.
Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you guys.
All right. All right, Jennifer. Welcome.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. You gave a copy of your report to Jennifer.
You did? Okay. Um, I've already been notified of a couple of errors when we took over that and they have one of, one of the executive board members listed as Lawrence County and they're actually, um, Need County slash city of Sturgis. So I'll make that correction if anybody else knows that. Um, I guess, are there, if there's people attending, so Jennifer Seitzma, Executive Director with Black Hills Council of Local Governments. And I'm here to present the two thousand and twenty-three performance report. Um, for anybody who's not aware of what the council of governments is, we're an association of city and county governments. And we have twenty-one members in western South Dakota, nine counties and eleven cities. And then services are also provided to our, our communities under a thousand in population through the county memberships. And we also provide services to road districts, HLA's, community improvement districts, sanitary districts, rural water systems, um, any other type of public infrastructure organization, um, for securing, well, providing technical assistance and securing funding for community development and economic development projects. So that's the, that's the brief version of what we do. Um, each year I try to get out to the counties to let you know, um, essentially what we're working on. I feel like it's really important for, especially for our counties. We're not in front of you face to face on a regular basis, um, but I want you to remember that we insist we do have turnover changes in our elected positions. And so a lot of times, um, this is the only opportunity you have to know me by face and name. So Richard has been serving for Lawrence County for, is it two years now or just?
One, two.
Two. And so he comes to our meetings quarterly and attends and, um, is able to hear the, kind of the background and the more um, deeper discussions about the internal workings of the organization. But this report gives you something on paper to let you know kind of what you're given for your membership. So just to talk through the report, the, the first page talks about who's on our board. Again, all of this is as of, so this is for two thousand and twenty-three. So there have been changes to member representatives. This is specific to the year of two thousand and twenty-three. There have been changes to our staff. Um, and then there's, um, also been changes to, well, our executive board stayed intact for two years. Sometimes it's just easier if you have people who are willing to do that job to keep them in place for a second year. Um, so we'll have changes. Um, so they were there in two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four. We'll have changes in two thousand and twenty-five. So if anybody's interested in sitting on my executive board, I'm always looking for, for people for that. Um, the first part of the report, um, I talked about our background and the different services, but on the bottom of page, page three, um, it talks about our funding. And so I like, um, our members to know kind of where our funding comes, comes. And so I like um our members to know kind of where our funding comes comes from. Uh, in twenty twenty three, our spend, our expenses totaled four hundred and ninety seven thousand, eighty seven percent of those costs are for personnel. So at the time, we had six people working for us um for most of twenty twenty three. And we have had a couple of key staff retire or take other positions. So we are a little bit short on staff right now. I've been filling in the gaps as as best as I can on on that. Um, I do have, I've interviewed a few people and so hopefully in August, we'll be bringing on another staff person to help balance out the workload. And then um only twenty six percent of our our funding comes from local dues, which is the dues that you pay us. The rest of it comes from other contracts that we can charge for and then grants. We apply for federal grants to help um offset our costs. And we get some funding from the state through our joint properties agreement with them. So highlights for twenty twenty three, in twenty twenty three, we um, we submitted seventy applications. And successful proposals resulted in a hundred and ten million dollars of outside funding for our nine county region. That was from January twenty twenty three to December of twenty twenty three. And then our organization specifically received an additional two hundred and thirty two thousand in direct funding through grants and local contracts in twenty twenty three. So again, we're always working to offset the cost of the local dues because we try to make um that as painless as possible for our communities and cities. Um, of those seventy applications that were prepared, twenty two of those were for Lawrence County. And then I guess since two thousand, uh, Black Hills Council has assisted our membership in obtaining over six hundred and twenty one million dollars in outside funding assistance. Those, when I say outside, that's state and federal funds for local projects. And that figure represents um three thousand one hundred and forty four for every person in the region based on twenty twenty census. It also results in a return on investment for our members at a ratio of three hundred and fifty eight dollars to one. Um, I'm going to skip over all of the counties that are not um Lawrence County, so they're in alphabetical order. I apologize that there's no page number if I missed or if I missed that or what, but this is still in draft form, so I'll I'll fix that for our final format. The top of this uh report shows the return on investment. Um, I started this report since I became director because I felt like it was really important to to let you know what you're getting for your for your membership. And so I felt comfortable with the numbers I could find for our organization going back to two thousand. Before that, everything was in paper format and not electronic. And so I just wasn't super comfortable on the numbers that I found in historically. So um with that, uh, when we look at the dues paid, that is not just Lawrence County. That's Lawrence County Spearfish, Deadwood and Lead because those are the members. And um once White Wood passes there at like nine hundred population, I think, once they pass a thousand, they'll come on as a member if they want to continue. So they wouldn't be supported by your dues anymore. They would be their own member. So that three hundred and twenty six thousand dollars represents the total paid from twenty two thousand, the year two thousand through twenty twenty three. And the seventy nine million dollar represents the dollars in assistance obtained for projects in Lawrence County. Again, that could be Spearfish, Lead, Deadwood, and then all of those other little entities outside. So your return on investment um through twenty twenty three is two hundred and forty two dollars to one. Um, going down to the bottom section, that only includes work uh applications submitted from December. Uh, or sorry, January first, twenty twenty three through December thirty first of twenty twenty three. Um, in that one year specific to Lawrence County, we submitted twenty two applications, resulting in sixteen million dollars of outside assistance obtained. And then some of these, you'll see um their status. If there's nothing in the amount approved, it's, you have to look at the status to know what's happening there. A couple of those uh were withdrawn. Um, for example, Apple Springs chose to to go a different route. So um I just wanted people to know what their status was for the stuff we were working on for them. Um, going down further, you'll see Lawrence County received nineteen thousand five hundred. That is your contract to update your mitigation plan. Um, that's a seventy five percent grant. The other twenty five percent is collected in local match. And we are actually the contractor for that plan. So um continuing down, you'll see like the Powerhouse Pass and the Meadow Crest Sanitary District, those were both awarded, but they were awarded in twenty twenty four. So we started the application in twenty three, so those will show up on next year's report. Um, same thing with um going further down, Oak Mountain Country States H O A. They ended up deferring their application to a later funding, funding cycle because there are only grant dollars left. And they they are a very small entity, I think thirty or forty homeowners, so they're going to need grant subsidy. So we'll resubmit that in January with the new fiscal year for the A R. And then um the Deadwood project was funded and um the Spearfish project was withdrawn. So um again, those things that are started in twenty twenty three but not awarded till twenty twenty four will show up on next year's report. And then this next page shows um just the the things that take up our time on a daily basis that don't necessarily result in securing dollars for any particular project. Um, so we do a lot of SAM registration assistance. Um, all these little entities like H O As, they aren't familiar with how to get registered in SAM. Sometimes they've had change in positions and so they can't even access their SAM registration. That's required to be eligible. Uh, we do environmental reviews for projects that maybe we aren't actually assisting with funding for. We do the administration of anything that's been funded. So um the David Bacon Administration, we're out here doing interviews with employees. Um, reviewing all the payrolls and ensuring that the employees are getting, anybody working on a federally funded job um has to be paid according to the David Bacon Act. And then um we're also doing the, we manage the funding ledgers and we do all of the the draws as well. So a lot of the, and then we also do the project closeout, which is its own set of requirements. And um we also assist every, our communities a lot of times might have turnover with the, and even counties sometimes will have turnover with a key position. And so because we maintain all those records, a lot of times they're auditors, you know, Casey Peterson or people, they'll call us and ask for things pertaining to the project that are requiring a single audit. So a lot of times those auditors will work directly with our office to get what they need um to ensure compliance with the federal requirement. So um I probably missed a few things on here. I mean, we get calls on a regular basis, a a daily basis for assistance. And we're not always able to capture every call, um, you know, as far as providing technical assistance. But um our biggest thing is that we we really do try to be responsive. Um, and if there's any assistance needed from county or cities. Um, one of the things that I don't see a lot of in here for Lawrence County, but takes up a lot of our time, we do assist with, we've been helping some of our counties with either adopting zoning for the first time or wind and solar ordinances or revisions to their ordinances. So those are pretty time intensive. Um, you know, City of Wall right now is redoing their entire zoning ordinance. So those are things that just take a lot of time. Um, and so it can can get us bogged down. And then the mitigation plans as well. Those are time intensive, the stakeholder engagement and um, yeah, just collecting all the information and working with the appropriate people to get all of the information collected to write the plan. So.
Yeah. Bruce?
Jennifer, you've been involved in some uh Forest Service cooperating agency meetings. Steve, haven't you on behalf of Lawrence County?
Yeah, in the beginning I was doing a heavier lift on that. Um, thankfully, we were able to get the grant or the matching dollars from the state to be able to have Mitch do more of that. So he currently is the consultant that's helping on that. And I've had to, have really had to um offload what I was doing on to Mitch because of my loss into key staff. I had a staff with nine years' experience and one with twenty two years' experience, one retired and the other one took a job with the City of Rapid. And I am the fallback. So all of the uh, everything is on me right now to, you know, I'm just making sure we don't drop any balls, which means a lot of hours of work for me. But the um current status, I guess, of the forest plan revision, um, they, the the forest, Forest Service is still intending to get their environmental impact statement out at the end of the year. There have been delays. There's the national old growth topic. There's, there's just, you know, timber has been a huge topic. There's just, it's, it's a big plan to write. And I think um many people who are involved with that have never been through that process before. Thankfully, Mitch has. He's been around for a while and he's familiar with the process and how it's supposed to work. And so he's been really good about forcing the Forest Service back to their own guidance, their own rules and making sure that they're following that. And he's been keeping me in the loop. Um, I have to tell you, there, we do the comprehensive economic development strategy. Uh, we get a grant through E D A to do that every five years. And I've learned so much about how our forest is a huge player in our economy, from tourism, from timber. Um, mining, like all of those things that happen in the forest. And then on the other side of it, because we do so much water and sewer infrastructure, learning how just the number of trees in the forest can impact the availability of water. And if, and then on the mitigation side, um, if we're not, if the forest is going to, Forest Service is going to go to more of a hands-off approach to managing um the forest, what does that mean for us when it comes to mitigation? We have all these subdivisions popping up in uh what we call wildland urban interface areas. And if we stop managing the forest, does that create higher risk for all of those subdivisions? You know, if we end up with a wildfire that can't be contained easily, what does that mean for all of those new housing? You know, expensive homes being built out in the middle of the forest. And so um it's just crazy to me how the forest kind of dictates so much for us here.
Is that you can have an impact document? Is that shared with the Forest Service or?
So I'm, I'm drafting some language. I think it's really important. Um, what I'm seeing on my side is that we have federal agencies, I think both with good intentions, but tend to take action that work against each other. So on the economic development side, they're always looking to, you know, for job growth and new jobs and and maintaining jobs. And some of the, some of the decisions by the Forest Service, if they were to choose to do more of a hands-off, even if they were to say, we're going to limit the number of um O H V use in the forest, which is is popular and unpopular, you know? If they made that type of a decision, that's going to impact our economy one way or another. If they decide we're not going to take trees out of the forest, that's going to impact timber. If they decide we're not going to um remove trees for mitigation purposes, you know, that could have uh more of an impact to our local responders, you know, when it comes to our, we we volunteer, mostly we have volunteer fire departments. So, so yes, I, I think uh we probably are at the point where I need to draft some language to our um, you know, our congressional members just so they understand that while E D A is over here trying to pump money into more jobs and stuff, you have the Forest Service talking about making decisions that could reduce the number of jobs, reduce the number of tourism, reduce and have a negative impact on our economy. Again, I'm not, I'm not here to say what is right or what is wrong with the forest. That's a, that's a big undertaking. But it's, it's, I think it's important to us here locally.
Just wanted to make sure I asked you about that because we're members of the National Resources Committee here too and understand that are interested just so that they know that that that's there. That might be something that can be provided on behalf of the county as a cooperating agency or something along those lines.
Yeah, I mean, it is a huge undertaking. Uh, like I said, a lot of people involved have not been through the process. Um, the federal government did provide the Mountain Planning Service Group, which is supposed to be a team of people who have been through the process in other forests. But just largely in general, I think the current administration is going to more of a hands-off approach of what we can do in the forest. Maybe not realizing that there are other federal agencies, you know, U S D A, Rural Development and uh E D A trying to to kind of boost the economy. This could be a federal decision that could actually have the opposite impact. And and that's where it can be kind of frustrating on my end. I'm like, oh, federal money going here to do this and and they seem to be working against each other. So um I try to bring awareness to that with people who are in positions of making decisions on that. Just knowing, okay, we've got an entire program over here that's a federal program doing this and another federal agency or program over here doing this. And they do not, they're working directly against each other. It seems kind of wasteful, but.
One more question, sir. Regarding grant writing in general, uh, would you help the county write any kind of grant? So I'm making this up. For example, we have a grant to offset costs for jail medical. Would, would you be able to help the sheriff's office with that or at least review grants?
Yeah, review. A lot of times the fire and police, they've got better, they can like pre-fill it. And a lot of times you're required to do that in the online, like grants.gov or ASAP. They could do things. They could add us as an administrative role to go in and review that. Or they can provide me the information and we can do a review of their narratives if we're familiar. A lot of times if it's a program we're completely unfamiliar with, it would take us a lot of time to be able to become familiar with it. And so I would just let them know right away, hey, if you've got a short deadline, it might be, again, always we'll review the narrative. But um our value in that is how well we know the program, where you might lose or gain points. Uh, for example, the assistance to firefighter grants, a lot of times people don't know that if you report in there that you already have one type of equipment, a pumper truck or a grass truck or something, if you report that you have one, you automatically lose fifty points on that. Um, or, you know, or if you don't have a reclamation, if you're using an old farm truck that's been converted into some kind of uh, if you report that you have one, even though it's, it shouldn't be used, you have to have a plan for commissioning that or you lose points. So there's, there's certain things where we're going to just know because we've done a lot of it. But yes, if you have um needs on the grant side of things, a lot of times your local people have been doing it for years and they just know how to do it. But we're always available to review and assist if needed.
To the, and I know that the sheriff has somebody that's been writing or ready to write some grants and I may share your contact information with her and that would be appropriate.
Yes, absolutely. And like I said, I'll be completely honest with them and upfront. If I've never worked with the program, I would let them know it might take me a couple of days to to be of assistance, uh, to get familiar with it or to just tell them I'm not capable of.
Thank you.
So, any questions at all on the annual report? Like I said, this is draft form. I know that there's a couple errors in there. I'll get those corrected. And then this will be placed on our website where you guys, if you need uh the final copy, I can email that out.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for anyone?
Nope.
Nope. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay. Yep, Lead Community Center Foundation Board. Who's going to lead the charge on that?
Well, I can take charge of this one, I think. Um, before you, you have a letter, an email to the commissioners. It talks about statute ten dash thirty nine dash fifty four, which is the distribution of the gold tax, severance, severance tax fund. In meetings with the Lead Community Center Foundation and other citizens in Lead and Deadwood and Lawrence County. Um, Representative Fitzgerald and myself are looking at changing the language in this statute. To give you a little history, this statute came to be in nineteen eighty one. And simply twenty percent of the uh tax that's collected on gold and silver extraction goes to the county on on a new mine until it reaches a million dollars. Well, a million dollars doesn't buy in nineteen, in twenty twenty four what it used to buy in nineteen eighty one. So the conversations that we've had, not only locally, but at the state legislative level, we've considered changing how that's distributed. There's two forms of distribution we're looking at, either increasing the cap to two million or some more current value or allowing a certain percentage to come in every year. And we're leaning towards legislation that would allow a certain percentage that's collected to come into the counties that are affected in the school districts every year. And so um simply, uh, Robin had struck out one line in the statute and that was just a conversation. But it really is the point to change that formula so this county gets some revenue every year from that extraction. And uh what we're looking for is the county commission to support that legislation as it moves forward. Right now, we're not asking for a formal vote or anything, but we just want support from the county when we bring this into peer next year. Right now, that money, if you look at it, goes into the general fund and then is diverted back to Department of Ag and Natural Resources. And the majority of it's used in that department. A lot of it is for bonding uh losses such as the uh Gilt Edge Mine, where the the state was responsible to move in, spend that money. So it's going to be an interesting discussion because the state doesn't want a reduction in that annual money. But I think it's time to look at this. in that annual money, but I think it's time to look at this.
You'll have your hands full.
Yeah, yeah. So we're looking for support at the county level as we move forward through the legislations.
Senator, is there any talk of altering the criteria for distributing the money to make it broader or more easy?
Well, I think we're going to take small bites of this. If we can get the formula changed and that goes into principle, I think what, what Dr. Alka is referring to is right now it's co-managed by the, um, governor's office of economic development and the county, and the principle is. And then the guidelines for the principal spending and the spending of the interest are pretty, pretty narrow. And so I think if we can get the cash flow up, so we have more money to spend, take that in the first legislative session, then we can work on those other details in other sessions. If we, if we attack the whole bill, we're not going to have any success. So maybe steps. Can I answer your question?
Maybe steps are way better. Any further questions, uh, for Senator?
I guess I would reach out to the people that are here if that's all right. Mr. Chairman, if you have any additional comments?
Yep, anyone else want to, want to take a bite at this apple?
Um, I would just like to say that Lawrence County has contributed, um, a tremendous amount of money to the state of South Dakota. And, um, I think it's time that we do look at that amount that we're currently receiving and see if we can change that to benefit our community.
Right.
And so we're, um, just trying to help out the committee and, uh, or excuse me, help out our community and do the best that we can. And so we would just love to have your support and thank you for allowing us to come in and be here before you this morning.
We're tickled your hair, Representative, because when your phone went off, you'll have to have donuts.
I'm actually getting a new phone because the sound doesn't work, but it works at, works at a good time today.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, in closing, you know, this is not a new tax. I want to be very clear, we're not adding a tax. We're just seeing how the money generated from taxes is, uh, put to public bodies. So, so we're hoping to change that formula so more states.
Yeah, this county and community should have gotten a bigger bite of it way back in the day. So thank you for your efforts.
First, ladies.
Uh, Robin, uh, there's a, a community event in August, is that right? And are you looking for speakers for that event to see if anybody might be interested in coming and talking about a particular issue or other issue?
Yep, so, um, Cervis hosting a ribbon cutting for their underground cavern on Thursday, August fifteenth, and there will be South Dakota legislators, Iowa or Illinois legislators and government officials in town for that. So we're looking to piggyback off of that and hosting a South Dakota legislator event on August fifteenth, or sixteenth, for half a day. Um, we're gonna, we're working with the Code of Gold and, um, W R F to get some surface tours and the core processing tour, just to kind of spread awareness and bring education to the legislators on the mining severance tax and what we have going on here. And, um, the follow-up recap event at the Roundhouse, we're looking for a speaker from the county, if anybody would like to do that, about half an hour. So we can follow up later if you guys want to think about that, but.
Not a half hour for me.
We would take ten minutes.
I, I struggle with two minutes. Well, uh, we will, uh, look into that and try to have somebody for you. Commissioner, Senator Diamond?
Well, and I'll just add that the congressmen will be here, the governor will be here, depending on our leadership and legislature will be here as well as all the legislators. So it's an opportunity for the county to get in front of that leadership to, so any event that they host, visit with those, those people.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. All right, at this time, we're gonna, uh, take items from the public. Is there anyone in the body of the room or online that would like to speak at this time? If you do, please stand up, state your name and address for the record and we will allow three minutes per person. Is there anyone that would like to speak from the public?
Let's see if anybody online.
Okay, we'll close that and, uh, let's do the executive session for, uh.
I was, I was going to do a quick reminder if I may. Uh, I think Commissioner Jennings and Sweet are set to meet with Forest Supervisor, uh, on seven thirty-one at nine thirty. Then also there's, um, a court hearing on July, or no, eight, August second at ten A M. If anybody's interested in being at that for some of our lawsuits. Okay, that's, so just, just make some notes.
Uh, at this time, I would, yeah, entertain a motion to, uh, go into executive session to further discuss some of these actions that have been brought against us.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to go into executive session. All those in favor of that motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Senator, I need the recording for now and Brandon, I'm going to call you on my cell phone, if that's okay. Okay, thank you.
Can we take a little break? A lot of wait for them to come back.
Sure.
Take a five minute break.
Take a break, so I'll mute it again. Stand by.
Ready?
Ready.
All right, we are back online. We're past our break. We have come out of the, out of executive section without any action. Bruce?
Mr. Chairman, recently in the case of Decodons for Health, Rip Wieland and Adam Wieland plaintiffs versus basically Lawrence County Commissioners, and this is a federal case in the United States District Court, District of South Dakota, Western Division. It's file number five colon twenty-three dash CB dash zero-five-zero-four-two-dash capital R A L.
Oh yeah.
That's right. Everybody remembers that.
That sounds right.
The, the court has entered its order for attorney fees requiring the county to pay, I think it's nineteen thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety cents to attorney, James Leach in Rapid City. And his question is, is whether or not you would like to appeal that decision. And so if you would be, I would be fine to entertain a motion to authorize me to let Attorney Richard Williams know what your prerogative there is.
Okay, I personally would, would entertain the motion. I can't make a motion, but I would support appealing it.
I'll make a motion to appeal it.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Sleet and seconded by Commissioner Flanagan to appeal the decision. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
All righty. We are down to items from the commissioners. Do we have anyone that would care to bring anything for the good of the commission?
I don't have any.
Or do I? All right, well, we'll take that. That one's finished. We can probably start our budget workshop.
Okay, give me one second. I'll start getting books down. I guess Paul's here if you want to start again.
Yeah, we can roll Paul through the.
Sure. Yeah, I'll leave it online in your helmet.
Here's yours, Rick.
Oh, thank you.
What's your number?
What's my number?
Two-two-two. 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 I forgot that. I appreciate you getting me in earlier today. You have the only piece you need. It's gonna work out too.
Okay. Who has questions on this budget? You should. I just figured I'd see if anyone had questions on it. We should have taken notes from last meeting. We had questions then, but.
I think there was some question about the inventory of the snowmobiles.
Sure.
And traders and the need for, for that many of them in the.
Yeah, well, the, the, the three snowmobiles that we purchased this year. The snowmobile that we have are close to twenty years old. They don't have a lot of miles on them, but these, these three that we just purchased are deep snow sleds. To get around in the deep snow, which they didn't have. And one of them has a puller. So the search and rescue has decided to surplus two of the older ones. Keep one of the pullers for a backup for the other sled. So, yeah, they're, they're up, they're upgrading as they need to do, but they're also gonna sell two online. The trailer, oh, I have some, I have some photographs there. And Brandon, I emailed you the, the same packet, so.
I got it.
Okay, very good. The first page shows the territory, because I know there's some questions about sharing responsibilities with, with Spearfish Search and Rescue. Shows the territories and that's basically divided by accessibility, quick accessibility from the Wyoming line over to the Me County line. It kinda gets out by just south of Iron Creek Lake, cuts across through and ends up by the quarry over here. So anything that the dispatch sees needs search and rescue on the south of that line, they'll call Lawrence County Search and Rescue. Anything that needs call for north of that line, they will call Spearfish. And that's, that's an informal agreement. That has changed over the years. When Mr. Sahara was fire chief, he didn't want to do search and rescue. So our Lawrence County Search and Rescue took care of the whole county for a while, and now that's gone back. And Spearfish has agreed to do north of the line.
And both pieces can certainly help the other one if they need additional.
Yesterday was a, was a good call for that. Had a lady at, at the Devil's Back though. We get hundreds of people up there every day. This lady fell and hit her head and knocked. And they called Spearfish Search and Rescue because that's their territory. They right away requested Lawrence County Search and Rescue to help. Because it takes a lot of people to carry somebody out of there. So they do quite often call each other for assistance, for manpower especially. It's getting hard to get members on both sides. The second photograph you'll see is the trailer that, or the second page is a photograph of K, where you're standing by the trailer that they want to trade in. And the third page is the trailer like they want to replace it with. And we've had several instances already where they're loading those snowmobiles and somebody will hit their head on the top of them.
Yeah, it wouldn't look good to decapitate a search and rescue member.
And we absolutely cannot put a four-wheeler in there. It's way too high. So that's their reasoning for requesting a change of the trailer.
And they're trading the old one in.
And they're trading the old one in.
Okay.
That only makes sense.
Yes, it does.
There was some discussion about keeping it for stories, but I, I don't let them get too, too much in the weeds. If you get too much stuff sitting around, you know? You're gonna buy something, you get rid of something.
Further questions for Paul?
Yeah, Paul, I have several questions. When I go through the budget here, I look at two thousand twenty-three, that's the last full year which we extended a whole amount of the budget in twenty-three. And I, for your emergency vehicles, you got three thousand something that year. And I guess I love Paul. Supplies, you got six thousand there and they just wanted to.
Uh, the twelve thousand, if I could find the right line. Is that, is that for the?
Supplies?
That's the top three is what you're requesting for twenty-five.
Yeah. Oh yeah, up here. And the reason for that, I made notes for myself. We have to replace computers in our office and in the E O C. Our laptops and our, and our office printer I T will no longer support at all. And that's our big printer. We also will be sharing a copy machine with Sheriff's Department at the new building. Rather than them have a copy machine, us have a copy machine. I'm gonna foot the bill in my budget and put it halfway in between both of us. So it's, it's more expense to us, but it's less expense to them, so.
Sure.
That makes a lot more sense than buying two of them.
How about the travel? I spent a maximum of eight thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-three and now you wanna go up to eleven thousand.
Yeah, and some of that is due to where the conference is held for us. And then how much training we have to send our search and rescue to also. I mean, I when we get new members, which we hope we do every year, you know, this year we lost Amber's husband. He was a good search and rescue member. Now we've got two or three more coming in and it's getting harder for us to get our members certified on a four-wheeler. We don't let any of our members ride four-wheelers unless they go get certified through the class. And we used to be able to go to Rapid and anymore it's, we've had to wait two and three years to find somebody even in the region to do that. But it's very important, I think, safety wise. We, we just gotta do that. So it's a lot, it's a lot more travel expense, but and the fuel has gone up as well. You know, we don't, I probably, you know, I spend more fuel than they do. Depends on the year, how many calls they get, how much travel they do. So that's the reason for that. But it's the same as twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, it's the same amount as it was for this year.
Okay.
And it's about fifteen hundred dollars more than, more than twenty twenty. And that's basically due to fuel.
I go to twenty twenty because that's the last full year.
Sure, that expense is true.
In the same way down here at the community. There's eleven thousand three hundred and you're, you're proposing to go to eighteen thousand.
The, on the capital asset?
Communications.
Communications.
Yeah, well, there again, that's probably have to come back and see you for, for supplement because we ordered radios in twenty twenty-three. They didn't come in until this year. And so we had to pay for them this year and I'm way behind on budget for this year. And we've only replaced thirty-three percent of our radios so far. They're getting more expensive every year. And then part of that communications as well is we've been working on Cherry Peak, Custer Peak, Spearfish, Whitewood E M for those communications. So emergency management has a, an antenna each, each one of those places. So if we get struck by lightning or wind blows them over, it's three or four thousand dollars just for an antenna, let alone the repeaters that go with it. So we're scraping by and we'll, we'll be back for supplement, I'm pretty sure because of that purchase of the radios. But I've been in conversation with Brenda and we just wait till we get closer to the end.
Well, I'm not here to tell you that you're doing the wrong thing.
No, no, you, just so you know, yeah. And a lot of people don't know that we have the communications in that many places. When I first was in this position, we only had Cherry Peak. That was it. And so if you got over near Whitewood, hit and miss. You might hear, you might not hear. If you got out, clear out south by Custer Peak, they couldn't talk. Cherry Peak just doesn't reach that far. And it's especially important for a firefighter that's out with a portable. So we were able to get a grant at that time to help put a repeater up here on Homestake Hill, which sends it to Cherry Peak, which sends it to Custer Peak and sends it to Spearfish Stan pipes over to Whitewood. And so those areas have their own channels as well. So the deputy jumping out of his car at Whitewood, he can switch to Whitewood E M, which the tower's right there and he'll be able to talk to the dispatcher and he'll be safe. So that, that is a much better system. We didn't use to be able to page Spearfish Fire from here. They have their own channel. All the rest of them are on Lawrence County Fire, but Spearfish is on Spearfish Fire. Since we put the tower in at Homestake Hill, it'll go from here up to Homestake Hill, down to Spearfish and then broadcast.
Paul, once you get moved up on the hill with the new tower, will that eliminate the Homestake one? Still need it?
Well, that's Brian's decision and they're still gonna use it. That's Brian's decision.
Okay, is there any further questions for Paul?
And one more thing.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Down here, it says search and rescue in twenty-three. It was just about, it was just about thirty-one dollars. So thirty-three and a half.
Uh, yeah. The they added five hundred dollars in the safety equipment. Every ten years. They have a date on their helmets. They have a date on the rope, even though the rope they may have had in storage and never saw the daylight. Every ten years you gotta replace that rope because, you know, fibers break down. It's not safe to haul people down. The helmets, that's a big thing for them now. They used to just carry like four helmets. Well, this day and age, almost everybody has to have their own helmet. It was not, not nice to use somebody else's. Yeah, so they're gonna be buying more helmets as harnesses. They're past their expiration dates. The radios are for them as well as in there. And they've got four thousand dollars in there for regravel, the parking lot, install our, our lights, and they're going to be installing natural gas there instead of. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, the last I heard, Powderhouse Pass was going to dig the ditch for them. All they had to do was install the line for the gas. So that's, it's good if Powderhouse Pass can do that.
Well, that's about, oh yeah, but I hope they can, I'm not just complaining.
No, no, no. There's a
I've got the figures.
And, and if you ever have the chance, Richard, I mean, I think you were out there years ago when we had the party. Everybody should take a chance and I'll give you a tour out there. Cause we've got about twenty people right now that will actually, depending on what they're doing, some will be able to respond one time, one will be able to respond the other time. But we do have in search and rescue a very good dedicated group of volunteers that come from throughout the county. The old Tahoe that I just got rid of a couple of years ago before we got the new one. We placed that one at exit ten because we have four, four or five members now that are in Spearfish. And they'll be the first ones to make it to Devil's Back though. But we put that Tahoe there and they all get in that Tahoe and respond there together with the equipment that they have with the Tahoe as well.
Well, back in the day, the, the actual group of volunteers on search and rescue helped establish that building that we have up here.
Yeah, they.
I mean, saved us a ton of money on that.
They were able to build that building and it's, they look back at it, forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Can't touch that.
Okay, further questions for Paul? Brendan, did you have any further questions?
I do not.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you. Any more questions? I'm always here.
All right.
Always, cuz they couldn't get me asked.
Brett, you were the next warm body coming into the room, so we'll go on to yours. What number is Brett?
One six two. Okay. I think if my husband did one body, honestly, um, I get cool pretty easy, I'm just saying.
Okay.
I mean.
Was that sad?
I don't think that's a stop.
What kind of questions did we have for Brett?
I think it was the, um, pictometry flyover, when is that scheduled? Cause it's listed in her notes. That's a increase was due to the twenty twenty-three pictometry area in the.
Yeah, to explain the pictometry line item, it's at thirty-three thousand eight ninety. That's the amount per year for three years that we pay them. But we only pay a third of that, but I have to put in thirty-three eight ninety because of accounting, I believe. So in the end, we only pay a third of that. And Spearfish and Debs would pay a third of each of that, so.
But, but the way things are written up, she has to put that in there.
She has the budget for it all and then I offset the revenue source.
Okay. So any questions, an extra twenty-two thousand in a year?
Cause otherwise she wouldn't have budget authority to be able to, to be able to pay it. So you offset it with revenues, so the revenues offset that, so you're actually budgeting for it.
So she actually uses.
Yeah, right. Yep.
Anything?
And that'll be the same actually with the G I S webpage too.
Take a break.
Um, I know that it used to be at five thousand and of course we had to raise that up because of Beacon. But, um, Deb got, Deb Tridle got me the, uh, what we've made off the page so far and it's almost paid for. Eleven thousand ninety-seven dollars.
Really?
Yeah, so I just wanted to pay for it, you know, the revenue, the, so, yeah, that'll be, uh, basically paid for.
So in twenty-four, I did not start that for revenue, but in twenty-five I will because I know, I know what it is now to be able to key that into the revenue source.
And we've had that on just, just a year.
Yeah, since November, actually.
Yeah, I was thinking it's pretty recent.
Yeah, so since November, we've made eleven thousand ninety-seven dollars.
Seven months.
I'm the, uh, I think Chair, if I might mention.
Yes.
Uh, and, uh, sixty thousand dollars in twenty-three for, uh, mapping, uh, mapping and, and area, we did a hundred and one thousand. We, uh, up to adding close fifty thousand dollars.
Next two years.
Oh, that would be the, the pictometry is forty-three thousand five hundred. So that would have been, cause I don't think I had it in the twenty-three because we weren't paying for it at that point. No, I did have it in twenty-four because that's the first year it started and then twenty-five.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That was a minor question there.
I can understand why you gave my question on that. Yeah.
The travel expenses going up, were this for education, training?
You know, they're the same as last year.
Travel should be the same. Um.
Mine shows the same for last, if last year and this year.
Or the upcoming. About is, uh, what, what the actual stint is.
In twenty-three, it was ten thousand, some on your budget fifteen.
Yeah, I'm not sure on that. I would have to come back on that. I guess I haven't changed it this year, so I didn't.
No.
Um, put that down, yeah. But from twenty-three, I might have, I don't remember.
Am I changing, changing? See, twenty-three is all that first complete year, you have expenses here.
Uh-huh.
And so I just looked at this year to see how much you had increased it.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, fifty-nine hundred dollars, forty-nine hundred.
So I have to get back, you know, the, the travel one. Yeah. I know I did raise vehicle maintenance a thousand because our vehicles are getting older and I just, whenever we've had something done, it's really expensive. So I just, we may not, hopefully we just don't spend it, is what I'm hoping, I just, but just in case.
Well, you have reasons for doing things, but I don't know what they are.
Yeah.
Do you think that you, uh, your, uh, travel expenses could be less than that?
Um, you know, uh, I didn't change it this year. Yeah, I think we had a little bit that was left over or whatever and so possibly, but then at the same time, I, um, conference fees are going up and, but I figured there was enough. Yeah, I, I did have a little extra left over from this year, but, so possibly. Um, but, yeah, it's crazy how conference fees are going, how much more they're charging for school and stuff. I just.
Okay, are there a lot of those schools in state or do you have to travel a lot of states?
All of them are in state.
All of them.
Yeah, and they're put on by the state. Um, it's just that, the, to get the building or, or the cost to get instructors go up a little bit and so that like.
So in your opinion, you'd like to keep it at the fifteen-sixth?
I think so, but I, I will go back and look and see when I raised the year before, I guess. From twenty-three to twenty-four, did it go up that much?
Brett, the twenty-three is what you actually spent.
Oh, I actually spent.
You had about fifteen-six, you just spent ten.
Oh, okay.
This is, the twenty-three is actual spent.
And you're basically keeping the same as what you had budgeted last year.
So.
That's why I used.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, I don't, I, I was thinking I haven't changed it. Um, so, yeah, I might have extra left over and, but I don't just use it all up. It's just, it just is, but it's been nice to have that buffer with the increases.
Okay.
Last couple of years.
Further questions?
Nope.
All right, thank you, Brett.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, Sheriff, you were the next warm body in the room. Please come forward.
Okay.
What number?
Two one zero, Brian.
I'll start at two.
Dispatch.
I need Bruce though.
Do we have any more open ports? We can go down again.
What, are you just gonna do a presentation, sir?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just like I try to do every year.
All right.
PowerPoint, but I gave him the stick.
Yeah. Do we have any more open ports? Cause he's got his microphone and he's got the cameras and share screen.
Well, we'll have to get him in here to see what we can eliminate.
Just pause for a second.
We're in neutral for a minute.
Yeah, unplug anything, either camera that goes off or directly. Or we can look it into mine and I can display and all this out.
Yeah.
Don't touch it. She don't have a, doesn't have a stick, just in any, like you put the camera and the, um, microphone. You want to do that microphone, you will tell me here, yeah.
What's this hole right here?
Yeah, it's not gonna work.
You can download it to your hard drive and then. What about?
We have to go up and do that stairs, right?
Should I take somebody else?
Okay, let's do that.
That's all good.
Let's. Well, uh, we'll go with Tim. Cause I would assume John's might be a little more lengthy.
I don't know, probably similar.
What number is Tim?
Tim one six one.
Thank you.
Questions for Tim? Where'd Eric go? We lost Eric. I'm, I'm assuming that a lot of your, uh, differences here are from going from here to the new building.
Yeah, our questions were, may I?
Yeah.
Our questions were, just how much do you envision changes going from just this building to add the new one and et cetera? I mean, what, do you have a long-term plan on all that?
Um, I'm gonna start out, I think I'm gonna have to add one employee, which I put in the budget. Um, it's kinda gonna be a test in June, the first year, because we don't know, we don't have any data, so, um.
We are actually gonna need another maintenance individual up there just to oversee everything, right?
Yeah, and then help to get things plowed out in the morning, because we'll still have this.
Sure.
Have all those parking lots up there and then obviously all the new mechanical stuff up there. Um, so I'm gonna do that and then I've got most of the equipment bought on this year's budget, so we're ready for that.
Are you gonna need a building up there to store the equipment in?
That's my plan. Um, I just, one of the other jails we toured had an outbuilding for their maintenance people. And I'm just thinking of things like, you know, store our new rotor in, our, our tractor, our skid steer, and then a place to, to change oil and do general maintenance on things. Um, I think we're gonna need one.
Okay. That'll be something we'll obviously address in the future.
Yeah, and I, you know, I put it in my budget this year. I got some pricing from Clary Buildings.
Oh, you, it's already in here?
It's in there, yeah. Yep, I think it's, uh, Brenda has it listed as fifty to talk to drive maintenance shop, two hundred and ninety-three thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Oh, okay, all right, I'd look right at it.
And you said you're gonna have to hire a new individual, so that would.
Yeah, it brings it up pretty minimally. We, we'd start them out at like a custodial one, just for the truck period or the, the, um, initial year, just to see if they're gonna work out and then gradually move them up.
Sure.
But they could do gen, you know, light maintenance, you know, with that title too, with the custodial title. Um, so, yeah.
That's all I remember where we're.
Questioning.
I didn't have anything else.
Okay.
Can I bring something up real quick?
Sure.
I bet, and I, it's my fault and I'm apologizing, I apologize to the auditor and to Tim and to you guys. Uh, the auditor already did all of the budgeting for salaries. And I overlooked Tim as a, as a potential raise because of the new building. And I believe his responsibilities are gonna be quite a bit more. And I had, I had put him, being that I'm in charge of buildings and grounds, I put him from grade two to grade three, but I didn't do it promptly.
Okay.
And I, I would certainly think he's deserving of that. He's got thirty-two years here and he's been to take on quite a bit more responsibility with all another job for a building. And then, um, you know, if we hire another person, he gets another person under him as well. So I just wanna make sure you guys are aware that I did put that in there, but it's not in her numbers, I don't believe, because I did that after the fact.
Okay, can you make a note of that, Brenda, for us, so when we get to that point?
Yep, yeah.
All right, thank you, John. Thank you.
You know, and just one other thing too, one of the big things that's gonna be kind of, we're not gonna really know, but the, the engineers that designed this building and the architects, I was trying to get a number for utilities, because I don't know what it's gonna cost to keep the lights on. Um, they said four dollars a square foot, uh, it's eighty thousand square foot building on, on the high end. So to try to keep it a little bit more palatable, I, I came in at three seventy-five a square foot, which is three hundred thousand dollars just for heat, lights, cooling and everything like that. So I don't know where we'll end up next year with that. I may need a supplement, I may not. Um, I'm hoping I've got it pretty dialed in based on their information, but we won't know until we get a year of data. Well, we'll know pretty fast into, a few months into it where we're at. Like these buildings are sometimes the most expensive run of the air conditioning.
Sure.
So it goes up significantly, but, so we won't really know. I'm hoping that number is, is pretty solid, but we'll see, it's a guess for sure. I didn't wanna overinflate it, but try and, try and hit it.
Yeah, that's probably a real tough unknown.
That's a tough one.
Yeah.
Said I had a lot of help from, from the, the smarter people that, that do all this stuff. And seems like they're pretty dialed in on what it takes to run a building on this caliber, so.
Further questions for Tim?
Nope, I'm good.
All right, sir, we'll let you go.
Thank you, guys.
And we'll, we just, we'll pick on you, John, because Bruce is still up downloading stuff for the sheriff.
Must be a real big budget.
And then like six different.
He does, he's up a lot. His department looks small, but then you add them all together and it's, it's a lot. What's your number, your?
We didn't even have John on the list.
Three one four.
One four?
Three one four.
I don't believe we did, but no.
I guess it's good to go.
Well, there we are.
Okay. Yeah, we didn't pick on him because his budget went down.
I've been ordered by. I was told to lower it, so I did it.
Does anyone have any questions for John?
I do not.
I don't either.
I, uh, I will say that the lowering portion of it is basically in bridges. We have two federal highway bridges that will be, are slated to be replaced. I don't know that they both will be replaced, it's kind of unknown, neither one of them have been let yet. My, they're both federal highways, so no matter what happens to those bridges, as far as we, we're, we have grants for them both. If the price, if the bid comes in higher, we only pay twenty percent no matter what the bid is. I think our original, uh, our original estimate was three hundred and fifty thousand, I think, per bridge. I did raise that to six hundred per bridge because I just don't know. I don't know that number, but, but it wasn't, that it did allow us to lower the bridge, uh, budgets from two million to one point two million. So it was an eight hundred thousand dollar savings. It could be less. And if they don't get built, it could be zero, I just don't know. You know, we're kind of at the mercy of the, uh, of the, uh, federal government right now on, on getting these bridges even let to a bidding. And then the other, the other area we lowered was in the paving projects. We have less miles of road that are scheduled to be repaved next year, so there was some, some substantial savings there. And other items, you, you know, the majority of our supplies and things like that, we left alone. Those items have, have not caught up, I guess, yet, but we did have five items that did catch up, I guess, that were fueled, basically. We do pay for all of the fuel in the county as far as gasoline and then we're reimbursed later, but we do have the budget for all of it. And I did raise that by ten thousand dollars and I raised diesel by fifteen thousand just because we went over on those items. And again, who knows, next year maybe you will go down, I don't know. Uh, gravel I did raise also because this year we did experience a dollar a ton increase in the cost of gravel. And leaving our gravelling plan at twenty miles per year, you know, that actually raises the amount to fifty-six, you know, raises a fifty-six thousand, but I was a little optimistic and I only raised it forty. I, you know, we can scale back elsewhere, whether it be miles of road or, uh, we can not put as much. we can not put as much gravel on a road, I think we can make it up. I'm confident we can make that work. And then the same with our chloride, because the chloride was raised four cents a gallon this year, I anticipate that hopefully staying the same for next year, but I did increase that by twenty thousand. And then our capital assets, and that's kind of the main thing I need to talk about, and that's, gets us back to this grant, our capital assets is for a truck, and it's for a, a carb compliant truck. If we buy one of those, we can get this grant, which gives us seventy-four thousand, I believe it was. Seventy-four thousand and some.
Eight ninety-one oh five.
And that is off of the state environmental, environment, natural resources department of environment and natural resources. They're, they're, they're in charge of this, it's a, it's a grant. It's established from a lawsuit with the Volkswagen company. I'm told that there, the amount of money that is in that program is almost exhausted, there's not a, it's not a lot yet, but we were selected for the forty-five percent of the new truck, the, the estimate I got for that truck is a hundred and fifty thousand, so that's how we get to the forty-five percent, the seventy-four thousand.
What type of fuel is this, diesel?
It's a diesel, but it's carb compliant, and I think that stands for California Air something Research Board, I think California Air Research Board is what that stands for. And this truck is, I think it's an eight Volvo engine, that does meet that requirement, so that, that would give us the forty-five.
It's a Volvo truck?
It's a, it'd be a Mack truck, is who I had.
Okay.
This will either have to go to bid, or we can buy it off a source well, or we can buy it off an existing bid, that is yet to be determined yet, but the actual, the quote I got is supposed to be good for twenty-five. So I'm asking, if we do accept this, we have to have it turned in by the sixteenth of August. We cannot order the truck until we get the returned agreement signed by the state, and then at that point, I think we have until September to order the truck, so. I would ask that if we are gonna accept that, that you would at least approve the purchase of the truck.
Okay.
So we can move forward with that in a time.
I, I will, I will support it.
You're not concerned about performance of the truck?
We already own seven of them. Yep, they're all good, yep, we had great luck with them.
Yeah, it sounds like a no brainer to me.
Yeah, I mean, it kind of gets the price of the truck down to where they were ten years ago.
Well.
And that's just the truck, by the way, of course, and then in the budget, I have also for all of the snow equipment.
Right.
The box.
It's almost as expensive as the truck.
It's more than the truck.
Yeah.
It's, it's actually more than the truck, so I think the snow equipment was a hundred sixty-four thousand, two fifty was the estimate I got for those items, so. Yeah, it's more.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Although we followed supervisor's recommendations to order the truck and authorize the.
And the equipment?
And the equipment, yep, and authorize the chairman to sign the grant application.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, although some favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, I can't see Brandon on there, so.
I assume you. Yeah, I keep flipping back and forth between the, the camera and, and the budget online, so I can't see what's going on either way. Um, so, yeah, and that was, back to capital assets, we also had put in the capital assets as far as two pickups to replace, you know, we have a nineteen ninety-eight GMC and a nineteen ninety-nine Ford F three fifty that were.
Getting tired.
Well, they're, they're kind of wearing off, so. We were entertaining the idea of purchasing two pickup trucks this year, so that was an increase in our capital assets over last year, was the, the, an eighty-nine thousand, three hundred seventy-one dollar increase, that's before we factor in the grant, so that, the grant will get us almost back to zero.
What would you do with the two old pickups, let, let Dave finish out their life?
Well, you know, in the past, we kind of run them to destruction, I guess, kind of, sell them for, just sell them at auction for what they get, and there's been years where we managed to get a few thousand dollars out of them.
Yeah.
And other years where we, we get hardly nothing out of them, but we would, we would surplus them next year, and then, and then sell them at auction.
Okay, any further questions?
I suppose those trucks, or pickups, excuse me.
Uh, I think the, the GMC was in that two hundred and eighty thousand mile range, and I think the ninety-nine Ford, we don't know, because I think the speedometer quit probably five or six years ago.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Problem is still working.
Most likely is, yes.
It's the odometer that quit working.
Right, the odometer. But overall, our, our decrease was nine mil, or nine hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars, and I think we can do that, you know, without really sacrificing anything in our current program, and.
Alright.
I don't know if there's anything you guys would, would want us to do, if there's any increases you would like, or any, anything else?
I just wanna tell you, I think we've got the, probably the best highway department, and, and some of the best roads in the, in the country, I mean, due to your, your efforts, I, I wanna commend you for that, you've just done an excellent job.
Maybe I could ask for a raise for myself?
Moving on, any more questions for John?
Mr. Chairman, I had one more question here, and maybe I already answered that. Seventy-five thousand dollars out there for utilities, and I was waiting for you to expect bits of that.
Well, as we're at this year, right now, and halfway through the year, we're, we're right on the same mark there, we're gonna, we're gonna probably be in between that, I'm guessing between sixty and seventy thousand this year. That's one of the items I just left, it's historically, we've added it seventy-five thousand, there's been years where we've been well under, and other years that we're close, so I didn't change it, I didn't lower it, but I didn't raise it either.
Well, I see in twenty-three it was fifty-five thousand, so it's quite a little change.
Well, it was a little warmer.
That's what was used.
Tim will be borrowing that money next year to keep the building lights on in the hotel six. Alright, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Oh, Sheriff, sir. What, what number do we want to start with on the sheriff?
Two ten.
Two ten.
Two ten. PowerPoint. By our illustrious sheriff.
Well, good morning, again.
Morning.
And thanks for the opportunity to come and discuss this year's budget.
Thanks for doing that, too, like I told the other guy, I was trying to see how this went here.
I, I don't take it badly at all, I look forward to the challenge of, of defending as I should, of the numbers that I put before you. If you can start this PowerPoint, Bruce, down in the lower right-hand corner, I think there's a.
We'll take a large break after Brian's finished today.
Ah, we can just run with it. Um, you're, you're still in the edit mode, so there should be a, somewhere in there, there's a button to actually start it, but I can run it as is. Every year, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I just start off, I, I wanna make sure that we're talking about the same. Yeah, if you just double-click on slide number two, there it is. There we go, we'll just run that way, and then we can download, I just start off this way, because I tend to run off a different sheet than you guys do, and so. Every year, do the same thing, next slide, please, so I consider three core items, and I've got them highlighted in red, just so if I say category one, that's the number I'm referring to, next slide, please, category two, that's where I'm at, and then, next slide, please, Bruce, that's category three. So that's where we are, now we're at, we'll start at two-ten. Sheriff's Office manages five different budgets or departments, and two-ten is the first. Sixty-two thousand, four forty is down thirty-nine percent from last year's hundred and three, three ninety. This represents a decrease of forty thousand, nine fifty, and this year's decrease was primarily due to the absence of a bigger project. The long and the short of it is, what I tried to do is, I have everything on the sheriff's office on a schedule, because I don't like paying big amounts. One year, I'd rather pay predictable amounts over a period of years, and so, the long and the short is, we knew that coming into a, moving into a new opening year, I was committed to try to make our budgets as low as we possibly could, to give the county an opportunity to test the waters, so to speak, and see what our bills are gonna be, so really wanna, what I wanna point out is, we got this, I got this down as low as I can get it, and we can function at this amount, but please understand, it's not sustainable, this is not a year that we can run at this amount next year, or the year after, there's no guarantees there, we've got equipment purchases that we need to keep up on, and this just happens to be a year, we don't need to buy anything, because we, we plan ahead, so, next slide, please.
So, do you think that that figure will go up to be closer to what it was last year, or do you not have any thoughts of, you say it's going to go up from the sixty-two thousand, probably?
Yeah, let's drop it on one more slide real quickly, then, Bruce, you see those numbers there, Commissioner, so that's a representation of where we've been over the last sixteen years, and what folks have heard me say before, when I need the money, I explain it, I tell you why, and then ask for it, and when I don't, I drop it right back down to where it needs to be, so you can see sixty-two, four forty, that's the lowest that that number has been since prior to two thousand and nine. Again, please accept that as our best effort, I'm doing everything I can for you, but it's not sustainable.
Right.
So, will it go up? Yes. How much? It depends on what we need then. We just launch from there, so any questions on Department two-ten?
No.
Okay, moving on to Department two-eleven, which is really the, I'll say, the heart of the sheriff's office. In terms of category one, I would, I'd offer to the board our time now, anybody wanting to discuss cell phone stipends.
I, you know, just as a general, are, are we putting a policy together, Bruce, is that, I've heard that several months ago, that maybe the department heads are putting a policy together, just so we have some guidelines on, on what the stipends would be from the various departments? Um, we've talked about, I'm trying to, I'm juggling my memory now, we've talked about sort of standardizing this compliance, didn't we?
Like?
At a meeting?
Fifty for regular employees, seventy-five for department heads, and one oh four for sheriff's deputies.
Right.
And staff, or staff, so, not all of them, but the ones that are on the on-call.
Yeah, so, so I think we're kind of fit everything into those categories and everything else, I think it's been adjusted to fit those, hasn't it?
Um, I don't remember.
I'm happy to provide some history, how we got to where we're at, Commissioner did ask me a question about data, I looked into that a little bit, about two minutes, I think I did nail it.
Okay, yeah, that would be welcome.
Here's, here's our context on where we ended up, where we're at, so a number of years ago, the sheriff's office was challenged by an employee's complaint to the Fair Labor Board headquarters in Denver. The result of that complaint was a wholesale review of law enforcement pay, as well as our on-call policies, practices, and expectations. In short, we were making some demands organizationally upon our law enforcement staff, so the symptom of that complaint was an unrealistic oppression of our deputy workforce. In short, deputies who were placed on call over fifty percent of their lives, couldn't even go outside and mow their lawn for fear of getting in trouble, basically. The cause, simply, the cause was, at the time, as is the case now, we don't have twenty-four hour coverage of our law enforcement. If you're not gonna have somebody out all the time, by default, somebody's gotta be able to take the calls, those emergency calls when they come in. The result of the complaint was an obvious realization that times have changed, and the county needed to make some adjustments. Progressively, actions were taken by both the county and the sheriff's office to correct the problems. These actions included substantial offerings of back pay adjustments to the schedule, and new policies that were more manageable for everybody involved. Ultimately, the advent of cell phones was upon us. Initially, the sworn law enforcement received county purchased phones. While the possession of cell phones solved many problems, the cost assumed by the county proved significantly oppressively, so I would add. Ultimately, the county decided to take a less costly approach by way of a stipend. Presently, in North America, according to Google, the average monthly cost for a cell phone is a hundred and forty-four dollars a month. Now, it's gonna vary depending on which phone on your individual plan you listed as the primary. If you look it up, maybe your phone, your particular phone number, only costs you eighty bucks, but perhaps your wife's phone would be a hundred and fifty. So it's a little hard to really get your finger on it, but that's what Google says. The stipend, stipend has been stagnant for many years at a hundred and four dollars, and that's at many years, at least going back two thousand and eighteen, which is the last time I specifically looked at it, and I believe at that time I lowered it, but I can't find all my notes on it. The stipend is also taxable income, therefore, the employee's realized amount is approximately eleven fifty-two a year, or in other words, about ninety-six dollars a month. This amount affords the deputy the opportunity to travel short distances while on call and reimburses by intent much of their expense. The amount ensures their availability to the public and to the needs of the office. The stipend, trust me, is not a blessing. It is a ball and chain, it means that no matter where you go, you answer the fall, or answer the phone call when we call. The receipt of the stipend demands exactly that, that the, the phone is answered when called, and that, in my opinion, is a much greater benefit to the, my office and to the county than it is to the individual. The amount that is set, I, I believe, having looked at it again since you asked your question, which is a fair question, I believe the amount is fair. I believe that the need is, is justifiable, there is a lesser amount that we pay to other employees. We do have a couple of employees that have a very unique skill set, and it's a skill set that when I need an answer, I need somebody to, to be able to answer the phone, specifically, we have one employee, employee that deals with all of our warrants, and when I need to call that particular individual, which is fairly often, I just need her to answer the phone. A few dollars a month enables that to happen. Is there any other information that you would like me to check on, look up, or any other, other content or context that I can provide in the stipends? Not from your department, okay, thank you.
Do they have to, how often do you require them to update their phones? I mean, you, you're at a hundred and four bucks for so many people, because they got data, and part of that data is, can be maps, aerials, all this stuff, and after two, three years, they don't work anymore.
I understand.
And we're only giving them a hundred and four bucks, and they gotta buy a new phone every three years, where they could get by with just answering the phone, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, I, I think the county's got a bargain, and I don't think it's fair to the employees, but that's just me.
I wouldn't want to create that freedom for not answering the phone.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, okay.
But I, just to follow up on that, though, Mr. Chairman, when I look at the policy for the county for cellphone stipends, it's just, essentially, it's up to the department heads of what that should be, and I think that we should have some, some parameters there to give some guidance, so that both the department heads and the public know what to expect.
Okay, I would agree with that, yeah, absolutely, that works. Alright, carry on, Sheriff.
Okay, sir, I have a particular employee who falls in the category of criminal analyst. In this budget, I have embedded a request to add another level. If you look at the, the pay scale for the county, you'll see that oftentimes, there's a, for example, correction one, step one through three, and then corrections two, step one through three, but for criminal analysts, there is only one level, and I'm requesting that the board be given the opportunity to reward, in particular, this year, a employee who has assumed a lot more responsibility and is doing a good job. It amounts to, just adding that next level, those rates would be taking grade one, step three, adding two percent progressively, just like every other similar employment that we have in the county, and then what it really amounts to here is. And then what it really amounts to here is, here's the bread and the butter. It would give an employee one thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars worth of a raise for the added responsibility that I've placed on that person's shoulders. It's above and beyond what others in her similar category are doing. And in fairness to this individual, they asked me for a raise. They asked if they would be patient and show me they could handle the extra responsibility before I would attempt this. Well, she showed me that she can handle it and so, she has earned this and that is my request.
You have steps for me?
I do, yeah.
So that would, why didn't she fit into the, into the classifications before? I didn't quite understand that first.
I added more responsibility to her.
So you expanded her role?
I did.
Change your job description section?
Yes, yeah.
Do others, other counties have an additional responsibility that you're having on there? No, I mean, like maybe? Or Benji in the county or somebody?
Do other counties have a similar position?
Yeah, that was similar position.
Well, what I can tell you is that there's no, there's no sheriff's office in the state that doesn't have the same responsibilities. How they disperse those responsibilities is up to their county and their sheriff. This is what is proving to work in our situation. And it is enabling me to not have to add another full-time employee. So one person agreed to take on more responsibility.
Thank you.
So category two, sixteen lines in this section. Five lines were raised and the balance of those lines remained at or below the two thousand twenty-four amounts. Sheriff's travel specifically had, we undercut ourselves the last couple of years. We haven't budgeted enough. It's taken from other line items that meant we couldn't get some things that we needed. So that in part is why it was raised. Additionally, we are starting to see, and I would, during COVID, there was a lot of warrants that came out for people that were not appearing. Our extraditions are now proving that out. We're having to travel to pick people up and bring them back. So that is my reasoning for raising that level. Sheriff's computer supply was raised to accommodate required computer updates for Mr. Diaz. So you'll see, just so I can just cover it one time, through in department eleven, we had to raise twenty-seven thousand five hundred in department two twelve, twenty-three thousand two hundred and then department two two five, nine hundred dollars. So all across the sheriff's office, fifty-one thousand dollars to bring our computers up to speed to move beyond Windows ten. So there's not much more I can do to defend it other than.
It's the way it is.
It's the way, yeah. Greg tells me we need to do it and I trust Greg.
Windows ten went away, right?
Yeah.
So did you, did you put on your budget or did you put an apple on his, did you put an apple on yours?
Well, what I can tell you Commissioner is Greg comes to me with estimates that he wants me to take out of our budget and that's what I do. To what extent he has to accommodate those changes on his level, I have no idea.
Well, I, I'm concerned.
We're not doubling up there, I can tell you that.
I can, I'm concerned about it though because here on his that he reduces his budget by sixteen thousand dollars this year. But he, the, to register deeds and maybe you too, why they had their budgets increased to pay more to him and that, so he might reduce his, but they had to increase theirs. What it looks like to me and so I'm just wondering how that works there. I was going to talk to Greg after that, but I need to talk to the other people. He has controlled some of their spending too. And it's like the other evidence.
Well, I'm comfortable with it either way, but maybe Greg owes me a cup of coffee. I don't know.
Well, I'm not criticizing anybody.
Yeah, I understand.
See?
That's a, that's a good catch. I'm sorry, I don't have the answer for you, but I'm sure Greg does.
Yeah.
Category three, well, that gives you an example there of where we've been at historically. We'd have been right where we were at with the twenty twenty-four numbers, where it was enough for the computers. Next slide, please. Category three, no patrol vehicles are requested this year. This year's requested purchase will be for a transport van only. That's pre-planning on our part. We're good with our patrol vehicles. We're going to need a new and different transport van. I don't intend to get rid of the old one. We'll continue to use that for some purposes. But these transport vans, they're a unique vehicle. We need one that's a minimum all-wheel drive so we can get a bed fill in the winter time. You have to buy the van itself or the vehicle and then an insert that goes in the back. And there's a lot of variables that are in there, but that's where we landed. Any questions about that?
How large is a van, a vehicle? How many passengers? Twelve or is it more than eight?
I put it more in the mini bus category. There are three different companies that we reached out to. Each one's a little bit different. It's just going to depend on how the numbers come in when we let them in. I'd like to be somewhere in that, you know, I would say nine to fifteen is going to serve us well. But that number can be a little elusive because you have to segregate within the van itself for common reasons. So. So actually, with not also buying patrol vehicles, category two items, decreased ninety-five thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars or approximately thirty point five six percent. So we managed to get those down by some planning. Any questions on department two eleven? We move on to two twelve, I'm sorry.
We bought a lot of vehicles in the past two years. I assume we got behind? Is that what happened or is this?
We, we had added a couple of deputies four or five years ago. Like I said, rather than add a lot in one year, I prefer to spread things out. Because the outcome is it's a gift that keeps on giving in a negative way. If you, we have to update our radar units in the car, well, that might cost us a hundred and twenty thousand in a single year. But if we get everything on a schedule and we just update it a little bit every year, I think it's easier to budget and it's much more sensible by my way, I think.
Right. And so you've got replacement of vehicles on somewhat of a schedule, so?
Absolutely. Yeah. Two twelve. So in terms of salary, it represents adding a full-time position. We discussed this quite a little bit last year as a refresher. We're trying to capture higher revenue from the marshals for housing inmates. Some of that is based upon service. Right now, we get seventy dollars per day per inmate. In our new facility, that should manifest itself in about a million twenty-two thousand in a revenue stream. But if our services increases I presented last year, we can potentially get that up to, I would say, we have a legitimate shot at being somewhere in a hundred and ten dollars per day per inmate. That's a substantial increase. It's going to cost the county a little bit to get to that point. And the two things that we talked about was the nurse, which we added, and a case manager, which it had been the intent to add the case manager this year. However, we had an opening in our twenty-four seven position. And so I'd ask the board, we could go ahead and add the case manager early and then we would come circle back around and in twenty twenty-five, we would replace the twenty-four seven position. This is the position that I'm referencing. But it's a little bit different. When you really look at our pay scale, rather than add another criminal analyst, I'm asking that we add a corrections officer. For one thing, the hourly rate is cheaper. For another thing, obviously I get a greater utility out of the employee. If there are corrections officers doing administrative work primarily, fine. But if I need somebody to fill the schedule, at least I can. So in a nutshell, that's where we're at. Yep, keep going. Those are just some of the numbers that we looked at last year. If you want to refresh your memory of just how even a small increase can make a substantial difference in what we're bringing in. Now, in addition, and we're going to cover, I'll cover it just a little bit more in the coming slides. We've got another employee that has proven themselves to be an absolute standout. I sent them to a grant writing school. They came back and they wrote us a grant. We won't know the results of the grant until September. The grant is for a million dollars over a three-year period, which will fit perfectly with the nurse's position, the physician assistant and some of the expenses that go along with it. You never know if you're going to get a grant. There's grants that we've written I felt great about. We didn't get them. And there's grants that we've written that I was absolutely uncertain about and we got them. I will advise the board as soon as I know, but I wanted you to be aware that. I think she did a tremendous job, by the way. Next slide, please. Category two items, four lines were raised. Jail supply, again, that's the computer issue that we talked about, jail board of prisoners. We're going to house other federal inmates. It is going to dip into our revenue stream a little bit. We've got to feed them. Food pricing for the jail, the cost of meals, that's tough to get your hands around. I think we all experienced that in our personal life. Groceries are expensive. That went up ninety-one thousand dollars. That's my estimate in terms of what it's going to cost to pay those extra inmates. Jail contracts was raised to accommodate an organization called Accurate Control. Accurate Control is the computer brains behind our new facility. That's what opens doors. It's what closes doors. It's what controls all the cameras. It is the bank's third, and at least for the first year, I wanted a maintenance contract to give us some safeguard. So that's it. Jail equipment budget, I threw this up there to show you that we monitor that one very closely. It has not gone up. That is an amount that I'm comfortable with. We've been at, and it's lower than it was in years past. I'm very comfortable with where we landed on that number. Next slide, please. Any questions on the jail?
I have a couple there, down here, male practice insurance. You raised that ten thousand dollars from twenty-three.
Okay, so male practice insurance is something that we've never had to have before because we are under contract with Monument and they brought their own insurance with them. Now we had a doctor and that was, to be honest, I didn't have any idea what male practice insurance was going to cost us. I threw a dart on the wall and hoped that we were close. I presented this morning, what was the figure, thirty-nine hundred sixteen dollars, somewhere in there. That's what it ended up costing us. That does not include the costs for the nurse and the physician's assistant. So I believe that we're still in the mark. We might be able to drop that down a little bit, but I anticipate some changes in that program next year. So I'm most comfortable leaving it where it's at, should the board agree.
About your contracts there, do they have five thousand dollars in twenty-three and you raised it up to forty-four thousand?
Okay, Commissioner, that is the exact line item. We went back two slides. Next slide up. You're in edit mode there. If you click anywhere else on the screen, it'll get out of that. Okay, I'll just tell you. So just two slides ago, I talked about accurate controls. That's exactly the line item that that came out of.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so moving on to fourteen. Two fourteen is self-funded. So you see the salary went up, but that's because of the full-time position that we are hoping the board would agree. So the way that works is the specific hours attributed to that program were allowed to take from, Brendan, correct me if I'm wrong, I would say the revenue stream that we realized from the programs. So I have to budget for it, but it comes out of the account.
Yes, it's same offset. You have to give yourself the authority to spend the cash that you get. So we have a means of finance set at this amount, but we also have a budget. So they basically intertwined and so, yes, you still have to have cash budget authority.
Now, we have carried an amount in category two of two fourteen over and above. That is specifically earmarked for the year when the number of participants hits a certain point. Then it is responsible on my part to add another machine down in Spirit Beach. We just keep dancing around the number over the last two, two years, two thousand twenty-five would be the third year. Just haven't quite hit the number yet. As soon as we do, I want to add a machine down there and that's the cost. So we're preparing for it. It's not money that comes out of the counties generally. Two two five. Here's another example of a standout employee. I cannot say enough about this particular individual. And I have put a tremendous amount of pressure on her shoulders to do more and more. The additional responsibilities that I've given this particular individual include office policy development, maintenance, front office supervision, to include operational oversight and financial supervision, which she does all of my internal audits now. And on the sheriff's office, there's lots of money there that's going in different directions all the time. And she has significantly increased my certainty that things are as we would expect them to be. The request is for specifically Jamie Vaseka Olsen. I'm asking to reset her pay scale by an increase of three percent. So we would reset that. Step one would be thirty dollars and eighty-eight cents, followed by two more steps with a standard two percent increase. This amounts to a one thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty cent raise for her. And I can attest that she has more than earned it. We have gotten a bargain, the extra work that she has done. Let's put some focus on this one quick. At present, I'm sure this board is aware, every year on a legislative level, there's a lot of attention that gets paid towards PSAPs across our country now. There's a dispatch center. If you think about it, that's just people talking on the radio. PSAP, Public Safety Answering Point, that's where nine-one-one calls go. So there's a big push to make sure that every PSAP has got two people on duty all the time. It would take, right now, we have seven full-time dispatchers that cover twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. That does not equal having two people on all the time. There are hours in the day, specifically between three o'clock in the morning and eleven o'clock in the morning, where we only have one dispatcher on. Our call volume has risen from fifteen thousand four hundred in two thousand and thirteen to twenty-four thousand eight seventy-three. That's a big difference. And what we're seeing, having done a study over the course of this year, and I'll share some documents with you, some of the busiest hours of the day have become when we only have one dispatcher on. What I want to really emphasize is the reason to add a full-time employee in this category is because there is an absolute need. Now, that having been said, next slide, please. Surcharge. Our legislators on a state level have increased the surcharge. Brendan and I worked over these numbers. Brenda and I worked over these numbers quite a little bit. This is how it all breaks down. There's twenty-six thousand one sixty-seven lines at two dollars. I mean, I could read off the numbers which year. It's a formula. The bottom line, it's hard to get your hands around exactly how that formula works. It changes from month to month. I can't tell you why. I'm not sure who can, other than, all I know is a check comes in and we split the check with Spearfish. They get half, we get half.
Sheriff, is this the one where it wouldn't have to be that way?
That would be my understanding. Next slide, please. So the estimated revenue. Basically, we should gain. All of that is to try to help show on paper that we should realize Lawrence County should realize eighty-two thousand nine eleven twenty-seven. It will not be exact. That's as close as I can come. A new full-time employee is seventy-four thousand fifty-five. So I do not believe, having spoken with those that make such decisions on a state level, they have not increased the surcharge just so we can put it in the bank and save it. They have increased the surcharge because they recognize there's a need. I would encourage the board to utilize the money to fill this need. Category two, no items were raised. So here's kind of gives you an example of where we are for category two and nine eleven. Again, I've done everything I can to try to help this, the board out. It's going to be a tough year moving into a new facility. There's a lot of unknowns. This is where we landed. Next slide. That explanation also serves to understand this area. In category three, it looks like it just went up tremendously. Once again, I refer to our auditor. That's not an expense to the county. It's, we get more money from the surcharge. I have the budget to give that money to Spearfish.
And I increase the revenue stream.
Right. And that gentleman?
So Brian, I just want to make sure that I was at conference on Friday. And they said there's a sunset clause on that, that I have had two years that that money goes away.
To be reevaluated.
To be reevaluated. So it could go back to the dollar twenty-five, but it is current today. And the reasoning is, is to try to eliminate PSAPs and to consolidate. That was kind of what they had said. So I don't know if that's, if I understood that correctly, but that is that how you heard that, Eric?
Yeah, that's it. It's a, you try to cut down on the number of PSAPs.
And it's, yep, it is not. Those discussions take place frequently. What I can tell you is my stance on our PSAP. Our PSAP is vital to the way we conduct business in this area. Our PSAP is also one of the most unique in the state. Our PSAP dispatches for, I believe we're at nine fire departments, four police departments, two search and rescue, it's three ambulances. There are other PSAPs out there that only dispatch for their own organization or one of each in those categories. Lawrence County many years ago stopped billing lead for dispatch services. Subsequent to that, we don't bill Deadwood. We don't bill Whitewood. Other PSAPs do. And, you know, the numbers are public. I can't regurgitate to them right now, but commonly, it's about half the cost of the PSAP is reimbursed by municipal health. That's not the way this board has decided to run. And that's just a statement. It's, I'm not saying it's not right. Maybe it's, maybe it's perfect for the, for our needs in this county. But we provide a tremendous service at all costs in this town. And I think, let me restate that. It's my opinion that we need to progressively move forward to get to a point where we have two dispatchers on at all times. And that number is eleven. I've shown you that we have seven. If we add one next year, the board could anticipate me coming back the following year and asking for one more. And do so for subsequent years until we can get the two dispatchers on at all times. That's where we need to be moving forward.
Okay. With health and safety concerns for our whole region, wouldn't it be smarter to get to that eleven as soon as possible and maybe charge back to debit lead and other communities to help support that?
The wisdom of how far to jump in any one year is something that I labor over. I believe that the right move now is one more.
And I don't have a problem with this budget. It's just in general thought, we're not charging these communities. We need more employees. That doesn't add up to me not to do it.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment here?
Yes.
I think we should aggressively try to get Spearfish out of the PSAP business, consolidate it, and then also realize that those cities are paying county taxes. This might be one thing that's included in their county taxes. It serves something specific inside town.
If you add one employee, how many hours of double coverage does that gain you? I think that's how.
Not all of them.
Yeah, realize not all, because you would need four to gain all of them.
Right. So how many, you know, it would, it would gain me forty, well, let me recount. This particular position would give two full-time employees on the, on the mic, so to speak, for the time between seven o'clock and eleven o'clock. We would have to make.
The prime time.
The prime time. We'd have to make an adjustment than what the other schedules are. I can't give you an exact percentage.
So you'd be down to that time from three AM to seven AM would be going to change.
Right. But also on weekends. So that's why, that's why it's going to be progressive. Your point is well taken. They're having times in the past where we need to make greater advances. And that's the last thing that I have to say. What we are experiencing in the sheriff's office is an increase in call volume. That is the justification for adding another dispatcher. That call volume is also affecting our law enforcement. It's affecting them to the extent that I have had to take two people off of their patrol assignments and augment our detectives to try to keep up with all the calls that are coming in. That is a temporary fix. We can't keep doing that long-term. So again, next year, we'll have some tough decisions to make on how we want to respond to the increase in calls, population, so on.
Okay, any further questions for the sheriff? All right, thank you. We're going to take a break for lunch, Bruce. You can take us.
You had sent out a meeting. She was always anxious this morning. Was it a different line?
Yeah.
I'd still like to talk to you here.
Now, we do do this today and then we don't meet on the budget again until September.
Right, so Brenda, after today, has to publish the preliminary budget, right? And then so, usually your first meeting, I think by law, your first meeting in September, you have to have a public hearing on it. You don't have to approve it that day. I think it has to be approved by October 1st.
But we need to...
We may have to...
Yeah. We need to agree on everything.
Sometimes Brenda, I think at the public hearing in September, she doesn't have all her utility numbers in yet. So she might ask you to wait until the second meeting in September to finally approve it when she has that data.
Okay.
That'd be a good deal.
It depends.
I'll bet you the utility bills for that new building, because of the size and everything, is going to be pretty crazy.
Yeah, $375,000.
It still irritates me that MDU charges $400 and some odd thousand dollars to get hooked up. And I think we need to remember that next time they come in and want to occupy our right-of-way.
City charged you $48,000 for two water pumps.
What did you say? I was chewing.
What, how, it was $400 and some odd thousand, MDU charged us to hook up the gas up there.
As in, they trunched it there or, I mean, what the heck?
What all did you get for that, Bruce?
Not much.
The cash was already on top of the hill, wasn't it?
They couldn't tap into the existing, where the lodge, some reason I don't remember now. And they thought that they were going to be able to, that that subdivision was going to go in down there and that they would do some savings there. But I think they decided to do their own. Of course, they were bankrupt or whatever, or in litigation or whatever. So I don't know what happened there. So I think we, we got it got left on our own. So we had to do a tariff waiver through the, oh, through the state and then, so yeah, but you're being taxed an additional, it's a significant amount each month to make up for that.
And from time to time, they come and ask to occupy our right-of-way and we always just go, okay. Well, maybe we should think about that next time.
It was one.
That building is going to go through a tremendous amount of fuel at a benefit to them.
Yeah, Perry, Julian building, Dan's Road, they build that going up in the hill here. The road down underneath the jail, you might say, probably. Did he build any, any building as a matter of fact?
Jerry Everly.
Jerry Everly.
He was traveling in or his exit, right, along the highway, right, out there. I think Rick asked the...
How many acres does he have back there?
I can't remember. Forty, wasn't it?
I mean, isn't it just for his own home is what?
Yeah. I don't think he was planning on building a home for a year or two. Well, must have just hit it. Right. Oh, sorry, must have hit it.
What did you say the number was?
One, seven, one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
How come we get?
Sure.
There's one on here.
I'm just trying to think what questions we have.
Why we're picking on Greg, his is less than last year.
Are we online, Brenda? Ready to go? All right, call a meeting back order. Questions for Greg?
I think the biggest question we had is how much more of an impact's gonna be having a new building and staff and equipment to?
Sure, it's a really good question. I took the time to, you know, obviously, there'll be some increased costs regarding facility, but all for all, it's not, not huge. Regarding staff, I'll touch base on that first. During this year, the secretary got in our office retired, and I had put in the budget to reclassify that position from a secretary of operation to a technology position to help improve our technology base in our office, which is destroying. I put it off for a while, just in the interest of trying to keep costs, but you just got to the point where there's so much work to do that we need more hands on that. And then I actually budgeted for an additional person. And there were several reasons that we did that. One, I did, you know, the duties of the administrative work that the secretary's job did don't go away. We're gonna have to distribute that throughout the staff. So it's not like it's, we're getting one full person, one full technical person, because all those administrative duties are being spread out. But now, now with having two more technical people, everybody in the office plays a role in the technology aspect. And then we just, we were able to distribute the administrative duties that they would have done, you know, things like monitoring backups and rotation of tapes and just a variety of things that she would've done. In the administrative position, they do a lot of different things. So the added staff, although it will certainly help us up in that facility, and we do intend to have a presence up there daily. We do an on-call schedule in our office, so once everybody's fully trained, the two people we just brought on in the last about three weeks. My estimate is between three and five months, depending on how they do, we evaluate and see how well they're doing their job. And they're able to handle the overnight on-call, and that person will be the person that will rotate out in up there in the public safety and services system for that week. So.
Do you have a room up there that to occupy? Okay.
We do. During the construction of the facility, there was a lot of discussion on that. So we have a spot in there that will be a shared office for our team, because there really won't be one person there. Unless you need to go roots in the ground for some event each day. But we also have some workbench space up there, some storage space. We can keep some equipment and some room to work on systems while we're there. But then they're available during the daytime hours, because it's a bigger facility and there's a lot more going on technically than there is here in that building, just because of capability. So having that extra, the extra work, hands, it will help us handle that better. We will know moving forward if what we've allotted for personnel, combined with what we have going on here and there, is enough with our total staffing of five. It is my hope that it will be for some time. But so that answers your question regarding staffing. As far as its costs overall, so I've kind of broken down, and I can go through some things line by line if you want to with regards to those items. I have a lot of line items on the budget, but I've picked out the ones that are specific to where we might see some increased cost or will see some increased cost. Because of the new facility, mostly because we have some additional equipment there, additional licensing for that equipment, things of that nature. So in the list of the breakdown, this will be in section two of the letter that I've given you, though I go through, I try to go through and hopefully this works well for you. When I submit my budget, I submit you a cover letter that gives an overview of everything, and then I do a line-by-line breakdown of each, each item, what the cost last year was, what the cost, or what this year is, the cost for next year will be, and the differentiation of why it either went up or down. So it gives you a breakdown of each of those. You have explanations of what those are. So.
That's the way I base my questions.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. So hopefully, hopefully what I provided you spells things out very clearly. If not, we can go through. So let's see, if you go to the next page there. Right, this whole section two is all of those things I would like to talk about. So if you look at the document I submit, we show you a picture over here. So it's, this one on the left, right here. So both, it's along with those papers, we should have that sort of here as well. I wouldn't have budgeted for those machines on our budget. No. In fact, that goes back a long ways. Many generations of systems, like Brenda, for example, if she's budgeted for a computer on her desk, she budgeted for, if we work with her and tell her what she needs. Typically, it's on a cyclic, a cyclic basis, so every three to five years, depending on how things are running. Sometimes we can upgrade them without having to replace the machine. But I would have never budgeted for that in the first place. So we're not having to replicate it in that budget.
I didn't think it was, but I thought it was.
Sure, absolutely. So going back to what we were talking about before, in the second section here. So the first item that would be Public Safety Service Center related would be fifth line items of VMware and vCenter Support. And that was, current year is 5,000, 2025 is 11,500. So taking that 11,500, one half of that, which is $5,700, $5,750 actually would be related to the Public Safety and Services Center, because we're having additional equipment. And this is going to be the licensing and support for that equipment. Going farther down the line, robotic wall support, it's a few lines down. That one is in the amount of $3,500 for 2024 and $3,500 for 2025. But that $3,500 is going to represent the maintenance for the system that we have up there. And that's a three-year commitment. So it's actually averages out to about $1,000 a year for those three years to cover the router if there's a firewall we have in the location. If, please stop me at any time if I'm not being clear. A few lines down, the Quantum DXI and I3 support. That is for our backup equipment, and we're having additional backup equipment for the servers we have up there. And, you know, I estimate an annual average of $2,500 for recurring costs. It wouldn't be one we probably won't see in 2025, but we'll see it in 2026. That would be about $2,500 a year. We usually pay it in two-year payments. So we're using $5,000 every two years for the maintenance and support for those systems. Moving farther down, Veeam, V E D A M Backup Subscription. So that's the software that we use for our backup solution. And the quantum I talked about right before that is the equipment, and then the Veeam Backup Subscription is the software for that. And I estimate that to be, well, we pay $25,000 to $29,000 a year for current funds, and that would be the same thing for that, because we'll run a duplicate system up there. We could try to do our backups here, but we'd be pumping a great amount of data to that line. We want to saturate that, so it's more efficient to have the solution there. That's why we're having some infrastructure there. So if for some reason our connection between the two facilities goes down, they're not reliant on that, that they're standing one player. Further down the line, CIS, that's Center for Internet Security, Albert Subscription. That's our intrusion detection system. We have one sensor on this facility. And we will plan for another facility, another net facility in 2026, and that would be in the amount of 11,000 a year. That would be an additional cost. We'll have it for 2025, we'll have 2026. The next one down, PRTG Network Device Monitor. That is a solution that we use, so we can tell the status of every device in our network. Is it up or is it down? What's its status? And so we will be another license for additional machines that we'll have up there. That will be about $980 a year for that one. That's in 2026. Moving farther down, we have Aruba Central. That is a new expense, and that is all that $5,000 that's listed there is all Public Safety and Services Center related. And that's going to be for, it's the cloud management component of the equipment for all of our switches that are up there. So anybody who connects a computer to a network, those all go through a large number of switches throughout the network. And so for us to be able to better monitor that. And we will eventually incorporate that here, but the current switches we have don't support it. So these do, gives us much better visibility of what's going on in the network. Any questions so far? Lot of detail here, but. BioKey Portaguard, that is for our multi-factor authentication platform. So we have one server here, and that should suffice fine for both sites. But in the interest of efficiency, you know, if we're disconnected, it won't disable those people from doing what they need to do. It would be fine. But I do want to eventually have its own server up there, and so that would be another 3,000, 3,300 a year. That would be in 2026. Visitor Management, this is a swipe on visitor management. So we currently have a solution called Lobby Track. The sheriff's office in Bryant is here. They utilize it. They have a kiosk. Sometimes when you come through the hallway, you see the kiosks against the wall over there, and that's when people want to sign in. When they're like a time server, or they've got something of that nature they need to do, they sign in on this kiosk. Well, this, that's an in-house developed application. It is end of life. So we're looking at another solution for both this facility, for anybody who wants to use it as well as that one. That would be a cloud-based solution. That has not been finalized. We've been looking at this spike on for a while, but they haven't not been able to produce a certain type of screen layout that we're looking for. So we're looking to change over to some other solution, and I'm working with their teams to get that. But so that would be, the $1,800 a year for that is an estimate based on what we know. It could be as much as, you know, like $3,500, it's about, I'm sure at this point. So we do have that $1,800 budgeted for next year, and there may be a variance. So other than that, down below in section three, there's some PSSC computers, PSSC printer, and PSSC tools and tool storage. All three of those are just for my team up there. It's just for in our office area up there. So looking at 2025, I see an amount of about $18,900 that would be in this budget that's specific to the Public Safety and Services Center. Looking at 2026, because of some additional items, we're looking to potentially include in the budget, that would be about $36,400 for 2026. But I wanted to shoot a year out to make sure you get an idea of moving forward with that. One item I wanted to bring up, it's not related to Public Safety and Services Center, but it's definitely worthy of discussion, is towards the bottom of section two, there was Tyler Tech Incode Annual Subscription, Tyler Tech One-Time Setup. I'd like to talk about that one. So currently, we have an accounting system that was in-house developed, the core of which was, actually went live in 1997. We built on it. We've done various migrations over the years, but this application is dead-ended. Our code can continue to be updated, but the platforms it's running on can no longer be updated. And so we have been looking to get a replacement for it, which is this Tyler Incode. I've spent, I don't know how long it's been, Brenda, working with Brenda and Deb, having discussions with the Tyler team, discussions amongst ourselves. We budgeted for this. We have not acted on it yet. And so we intended to sign off on this this year, but we haven't even brought it to your, your attention yet, because the decision hasn't been made by collectively the three of us of when we want to move forward with it. This has been a tough year, because we're all stretched so thin with regards to this project as well as a few other things. It's an election year, so it's really tough. So it's been hard for us to bite on this, knowing that we would have to move forward with then the data conversion process and everything involved with it. So this year, this year for the annual subscription, like I said, the one-time conversion was at $156,000. So that is intended to be spent this year. Whether we're able to actually accomplish that is going to depend on their office's ability to participate and sign off, sign off on this with their workload. I didn't include it in next year's budget. So that is a lion's share of where this budget went down. If we're not able to do it this year, I will probably come back and board and ask for that again, once we get past this. With all this been going on, it's a lot to try to bite on. The $85,000, which is the line above that, would be the annual fee for that, which includes all their support, maintenance, hosting, everything associated with the application, once we are actually live. So that's a $156,000 is basically getting us there, doing our data conversion, bringing us up to the point where we can go live, and then the additional residual annual. So I just wanted to make sure. I pointed that out, so you know it's coming, you know what our status is. More than happy to talk about it. Brenda can share her thoughts on it too, because she's been in numerous sessions with me, reviewing the product, making sure it's gonna do what they say it's gonna do. I think it would be a nice benefit for their office. It's just the transition is tough. So.
Is this one machine that sits in one office, or is this more than five machines that feed off of themselves in a total of system?
No, it is a system, and it would be a cloud-based system, because right now, our current accounting system, we host it here ourselves. Virtually every employee has access to it, because they have to submit their time card through it. And offices like the auditors, we have accounts payable, accounts receivable, payroll, county assistance, that's tax apportionment. Everything that's done for her office, the treasurer's office takes care of the collection side of taxes. Then each office has some other things that they're able to put into the system, like for example, the public defender, if they have court-appointed attorney fees, they would be able to submit those into the system for county assistance. There's a lot of modules in this, in this application, which the new one would take care of. Just like the current one, every employee would be able to access a component of it for submitting their time card, getting their leave and earnings statements, being able to see what their leave balances are, all those kind of things. So it would be something that would be enterprise-wide.
So you're paying a lot of money for something you don't get to touch.
Exactly.
Basically.
You own the data.
Yeah.
And then you subscribe to the platform.
I will admit, that's probably the biggest trigger to pull, because now you can call Greg and say, Greg, we need to make this tweak, and he makes it and it's done. We won't have to have this. It's like, Greg, we need this, and he's, you know, we're gonna have to call, or, you know, you know, we're humans, so of course, you know, sometimes you make a mistake, or before you are down, you call Greg and his team, you know, walks you through the pair, where you're gonna have to rely on a third party to get that done. But, you know, it is at the end of it's, it's. It's been amazing. I mean, I can remember when he first started working here, sitting in this room, writing the code for that. So it's like something that I know literally on the back of my own mind, because I was involved in making it work, and we're not gonna have that. And that's, it's hard to pull that trigger, because we're gonna lose that.
It'll be worth it in the long run.
It will be. It's just we've got to, we've got to do it, and, and, you know, it's a little busy, unfortunately, but that's not an excuse either.
Monument Health spent $90 million for new software.
Did they? $90 million?
Well, that included the training, and you have to pay the docs to train.
Right.
And all that. It's a huge benefit now. So. It's not cheap. Epic, yeah.
I will say that we're really proud of that application that was done, because you have to have such a long service life to be able to keep it going. But it is dead-ended, and we just, you know, at that time, when we first started the development process, that was a hard thing to do at that time, to be virtually possible today. Plus the fact that, you know, we don't want to be in a situation where we're in a high one. So that's really important as well. So it really benefits us to make this move. It's just, you know, the transition's always hard. Anytime you do kind of migration of from one system to another, it's challenging. That'll be a heavy lift for our team, just getting the data prepared for them for for them to get it. We have things that have been written that are universal enough that will work for that. But, you know, it's make doing any kind of data migration was a challenge to get everything, you know, lined up for where it is in your system. You're working to be theirs and and much of the time, if not apples and apples, you know, it's you have to work around that. So but I wanted to make sure you're aware of it, that it's coming. And that's the the fiscal component here in the budget.
We'll test it before we do a live, right?
Oh, yeah. Side by side, side by side. No, that's a good point. I'm glad you put it in front of us. You know, we will have to.
Part of the issue here as well, I think, right?
Yes. And that's where the time time factor involved, because it's it then when we get to that point, it's going to involve a lot of her and her team and everybody involved with it. Make sure that you're running things side by side to make sure that things all come out and work like they're supposed to. And that's that that takes some takes some time to do that. A lot of effort on their part.
Brenda, your office is probably not going to have the time the rest of this year with the election.
That's that's where we run into the problem unless we we just we purchase it towards the latter part of the year. And then, you know, it won't be a go-live till 25.
Right.
Sometime. I just so Greg and his team could start, you know, then he's right in the middle of we're moving into the new facility. And everything is going to happen in November, October, November.
Starting right now. It's we're things we're really ramping up. We're getting equipment. Everybody's involved in configuring equipment. I mean, there's going to be a lot of installation. There's going to be a lot of labor involved getting us into that facility so that everybody has what they need when we need to go. Have a key.
We don't use it so much, but you got to understand, I mean, it's going to be hard to understand.
But we we will get there. It's just, you know, a matter of whether we pull the trigger towards the latter part of the year and get it purchased. So then come January, get them ready to to start.
So is that what you anticipate happening or do we want to do budget for 25?
At this point, I think we were we're we're late enough in the beginning that it would be virtually possible to do it.
Would the data conversion itself take probably a matter of weeks or would it be quicker than that?
It can take quite some time. I mean, I. Well, I did. Yeah.
Over a year.
Yeah. It could take quite a bit of time.
So before they can start using it, in other words, might be quite a quite a ways out, right? Because of the data.
It really, so just to just talk about data conversion a little bit. We have to get all of our data out of our system. Now, one thing that's different than going with like what they have before, which is New World, to what we have. It's our data. It's our system. I know where everything is. Whereas in that system, there's a lot of hunting and pecking for what, you know, where you get your data from. So it it's hard to compare the two exactly side by side. You know, we know the mapping and everything is redeveloped there, right? There'll still be effort involved, making sure things line up properly. So I think it would mitigate some of that timeframe. But it is, we're talking months, we're not talking weeks.
So that that might, that part could almost get started potentially yet this year, because.
It it could, but then then again, so let's let's, you know, you start giving them data, right? Then they're going to have, they're going to need our time to be able to line stuff up. You you decide where things go. They they provide you with the mechanisms to do it, but you're the one that decides where that stuff goes. So it requires your time. They don't just say, okay, well, give it away. You know, you're telling them where it's going to go. And since they don't have it, so, you know, case in point with with the server, right? They had done in a new world server conversion before. So they were familiar with it. They still had the unique data of their office and how they used it to work around. And people, people are creative, right? If they want a piece of information and there's not a place to put it, they will put it in a spot that might not be designed to go. And so you're trying to to piece through that. And and so it's not necessarily like your data is all clean, right? You have to dig through that and parse it, which is separate things to get it in the right format to where it goes to go. But so there's it's going to take considerable of time and energy on our part. You know, and some of that is going to have to be with their offices to clarifying their data as well, you know? The data doesn't belong to my office, it belongs to their office. The system currently, you know, we're we're one of them managing that, so. So that answers your question.
Anything further for Greg?
Can I add one more thing? Since we talked about the Public Safety Services Center, did you anything you want to add on that with regards to?
All right.
Thank you.
Hopefully this was helpful.
It was.
Thanks for your time. Good luck with the proceedings.
Do we want to go back and go through? Just to, do we want to go back through these allocations again or is everybody comfortable where we left it last time? Yes.
There's one that we should probably talk about. I think this $5,000 from the Fourth Judicial from, yeah, from from Drug Court. That's one you might want to put aside and just a brief explanation. So that would be. I can't get the word now. That would be something that would be levying for.
Omit it. Bruce, omit it.
Well, a quick explanation. So that's one that would be would be would be levying for. I think what you're going to see is is that there's been a greater understanding of of how the opioid fund money works. So you have about $120,000 of opioid fund money and you do $25,000 to Compass Point thus far. So I think some of the judges and folks that are involved in Drug Court were recently out of conference. They got together, they talked, they sorted out that they the state, I think, has now found a way where they can accept the opioid money. And so you'll probably see by your next meeting a request from the Fourth Circuit Drug Court for opioid money specifically. And I don't know how much it'll be, probably for maybe $20,000 or so in that ballpark. So this this amount, this 5,000 would be in addition to that. I don't think that's really what they intend. I think that that 5,000 that you'll see would also be included in their in their in their updated ask, if that makes sense. I think that Mead County and what, Indue County have already have pledged some money of their opioid money. So this is money that come from settlement funds, not taxpayer dollars. I think it was $5,7500 respectively. And but again, there's about $120,000 in that account to date. Brenda continues or will continue to get checks on that for many, many years, probably after we're all gone. And so the money, the money has to be spent. So I that helps. That $5,000 you probably might want to just tax out for now. Is that fair, Brenda?
Right, yeah. So Mead County, like Bruce said, gave 7,500. Buick County gave 5,024 already. And like Bruce said, they're they're going to come to a meeting and request some for 2024. And then we could do that going forward. The problem, the only problem with, you know, so if we allocate.
Allocation.
Allocation. So just keep in mind that if you don't put the $5,000 in here, which is fine, we can take that out. But we can also take the 50,000 out of Compass Point as well. The only thing is, is we have to do a supplement in order to spend the opioid money because you have you have you have to have budget. You have to have budget authority. So we don't, if we take it out, we take the 50,000 out of Compass Point and the 5,000 out of Drug Court. We're not levying the people for it. But we have to, in order for me, if we decide to make a motion to give them some of that funds, kind of we, because we did that when we did for Compass Point. You actually have to go through a supplemental budget hearing, which is not that big of a deal. Just that's how the process will run instead of levying against the people, which we could do that. That would take 55,000, 55, 55,000 out of your your budget for 2025. But just keeping in mind that if we do allocate any more money to Compass Point, we have to, we have to give us budget authority, which is, that's not a big deal. It's not taxing the people. We just, we have to do that, which we would also have to do for Drug Court, which I made a line item for that. We could do that as well. Because if they come in and you do decide to give them money here in '24, that's what we'll have to do in order to spend that money out. And so, yeah.
Okay, I just want to. I want to start at the top here and just go down on allocations and and reiterate what I wrote down last time and see if we're still on page. And for Dump Week, we agreed on 10,000. Good Shepherd, we agreed on 1,000. Fast Bender, I think we went to 5,000.
Excuse me, but Good Shepherd is going, moving up the lead too, so that'd be two of our sources. Should we take that into consideration? Because they're going to, Lead is the only one to give us something. And Spirit just wants to give us some, the same thing.
Good Shepherd. They're just going to location that they leave. So we're just concerned, are they going to double their ask or they're going to ask for a certain amount?
Well, they've only asked for a thousand.
This year, they only asked for a thousand.
Well, about next year. Okay.
Well, that's.
I think we got to change it right now before we get in a higher amount of money to do something.
Change it to 2,000?
It was just 1,000 for Spirit. He said, well, you could give a thousand for Spirit, but we split our Good Shepherd in two and half of the lead. And we need the same amount for them.
But it's the same Good Shepherd that's running both.
Yeah.
Outfits. And and they only asked for the thousand. But the lead is is there, it's a trial deal. It's it's not guaranteed that they're going to stick up there. They're going to try it for a few months, if I remember right.
Yeah. Well, we give even Vannenberg for now, why it's going to stick for another month or so. If they they decide not to do it up there, we're going to, they're going to put the money in the spirit. That's probably going to go, it's going to be spent one way or another.
It is, but they didn't increase their ask.
Yeah, I'm just going by what we've been asked to do.
Well, they didn't, they haven't increased the ask yet, but they got their name from us.
So they sent that letter.
Yeah.
Where was that?
In 111.
About the fifth one, third one down, fourth one down.
All right, well, Fast Bender, we agreed on five, right?
How many years have they been given to Fast Bender? There are quite a few years and they just said they got an organization out of Deadwood. And can we think feel our obligations is quit or now or do we need to give twice as much money because they split the area EPO? That's what's going to happen to this Good Shepherd too. Just see what I'm trying to say. There are several things that you got in there and this budget though, that weren't in there past.
The Fast Benders been in there for several years.
They have.
Yeah.
When do they get paid up?
When do they get paid up?
Yeah.
Every January, we give.
No, he wants to know when we're going to be able to quick give and take.
Oh, when we're going to stop.
Yeah.
Probably never.
Well, they asked for 10 and we agreed on five last time. Is everybody still okay with that or not?
Decide not to. That's would be your decision on whether or not you wanted to.
Boys and Girls Club, we agreed to stay at 75 there. Opera House, 250. SEDC membership, 1,000. What is Economic Development that for Deadwood?
I also, Chairman, I also added to Matthews Opera House for 250 as well.
Okay, yeah.
To do as well. You have to match that.
All right, on the Economic Development ones, we 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 stayed at 500. And then the, I got to get my ruler. BHCLV.
That is council local government.
Did we just, from what I wrote down, we decided to give them their little bit additional?
Yep, 13,860.
It was Jeffrey.
Okay.
Yeah, they upped their ante to 52 cents a person. And so the colony pays 52 cents a person for their share. Spirit, how many people live in Spirit? 52 percents for their share. And that's the way it gone. They just raised it more than you think.
Yeah. Are we still all right with, we left CASA at 15? We left teen, well, teen court's been the same. We left that, we went ahead 17,5. Drug Court, we're going to get rid of that. Correct?
I don't know if you are or not. Brenda kind of outlined the pros and cons of that.
Well, maybe we should strike it. What's everybody think?
I think might as well take it off.
Okay. Brandon, chime in if you don't agree with something here.
I will, I'm trying to follow a line along on the on the.
All right, the nurse, the nurse, we went 59, 446. Ambulance, 52, 25. Ambulance, 52, 25. Sturgis, we stayed at, well, that's at 13, 29. Northern Hills Training Center, we went to 5,000, correct? Compass Point, 60,000.
And that's the other one? Did you want to remove that 50,000 or because we have that in there? Maybe if they.
Put this down to 10 then?
Logic works here too.
Yeah.
Okay. Behavior Management, same. The library, Eric, you wanted to discuss that one. We we had it at 48, 487, 360.
So all of the libraries wanted a just a 10% increase. And I think that that Deadwood, Whitewood and Lead probably need 10% increase. I don't know that Spearfish does because I think they have enough revenue sources. So I would like to break that down, maybe give Spearfish a 5% increase and the other ones a 10%.
We we cut them all down 10% last year. I was around you.
A couple of three years ago. And we haven't given them a raise.
We haven't given them any increase.
That's 21, I think.
I think we cut it 20%. I think Randy voted for a 30 and I think I.
So Spearfish has other funding sources that the other communities don't?
They have more lucrative city funding.
Lead has two other net sources of funding besides the colony. They have a pie bake sale and some other deal that they get money from. And Deadwood gets money from the gambling association besides what we get. And that's all those two, but Whitewood doesn't have any other source. They can't even get much out of the colony as those, the other places.
I would say that Deadwood, Whitewood and Lead all rely on the volunteer boards to generate revenue. Spearfish, I don't think does.
Now, they get quite a lot of money from from the city. Very good.
They're probably a lot, lot larger establishment than the others, right?
Well, they are, a far larger budget. You know, Spearfish, so 200, well, let's see, this county funding, now you're looking at 207,000 to Spearfish versus 82 to Lead, 55 to Whitewood and or 82 to Deadwood, excuse me, and 97 to Lead. So it's just.
You're on that board, right?
Yes.
And you're, so you're proposing 5% to Spearfish and 10% to the others?
Yes.
He's on the board.
Okay.
Follows recommendation.
I I can agree with that. Brandon will probably lose his happy home.
He was getting 5% more than he had last year.
My only comment is we're kind of micromanaging the libraries. I think they figure out amongst themselves how to distribute the money we give them.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Kind of collectively do it?
Do they? Okay.
What do they do? They get together before a bunch of time and and agree on a general percentage for all of them.
Okay.
And they haven't had a raise from the colony for four or five years.
It's 21, I think, 21.
Okay, is everybody in agreement with Eric's logic?
I don't think they should get any more increase myself.
You're going to, what are you hoping to do?
So.
Move them back to the 207?
Well, I was going to give.
Just don't put me on that board next year.
That's Tuesday where the new guy goes?
I know.
That's where I had to go.
I don't know if they did, if they, just the 10% on each one, they kinda.
They kinda tend to do that.
Now, they've been asking for 10% for the last two or three years. To get them back up where they were five years ago.
They'll take it for several years.
So are we in agreement on the 5% for Spirit Fish and the 10% for the others?
I think Randy's doing some quick math.
So the 10% on the 207, 39 is 228, 117, so, okay, so we, 207. 217. 748, 748.
So what's our grand total?
Your normal adding machine.
No. It would be perfect for me to go up. Let me just double verify.
Probably won't be able to use that calculator when we get our new accounting system.
Yeah, that one worked for a year and a half. I was like, I'll get 23, not 22. 476, 991. So we'll check, make sure that is correct.
I guess you're not using your thumbs.
That is the big problem. 476, 991.
Do you ever want an agreement? Yes.
Yep.
Okay, yeah.
So is that three?
You got outvoted.
You can vote against the budget.
Yeah. All right, the Fair, we left at 10. Prairie Hills, we went to 15. Senior Citizens, we're at 5. 4H, 4H, we want 52. Is that correct? Yeah.
Depends by level of discussion on Senior Citizens, paying for that budget.
Yeah, Tommy, you used to be pretty. All right, 4H for State, 11, 5, 25. Soil Conservation, we went back to 20. And that takes care of that. Does anyone wanna go to any specific department and look over anything? Or are we okay where we're at with all that? If we're all okay on the rest of them, then I guess we just have to take care of the cost of living. Cost of living, yeah.
We do have, just Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
I just have a couple of things. I did reach out to Walmart yesterday, just to kinda see if she had heard anything from our underwriters yet. So she reached out to them, and I had asked her that. I would kinda, right now I'm budgeting for 10% increase in the insurance. And would like to, if they feel it's going to be under 5%, to decrease that to 5%. And she gave me the thumbs up that that would be.
Oh.
Sufficient.
So we could.
So to move that down to 5% and feel.
It's a good savings.
And feel good about it. I did incorporate.
Possibly more.
Yeah, it just depends, we will hear from them in the middle of, we have our insurance meeting on August 20th. So we will more for sure.
Right.
And maybe sooner, if we do find out, you know, we all, we always also have our budget hearings starting on September 3rd.
Well, I don't think any of us will argue with you on this.
Yeah, so we would, we'd be able to, you know, if we could, we could decrease that a little bit.
Okay.
So I will.
We still have another opportunity in September to.
If we, if we would need to, if we, you know, if it came in like at 1 or 2, I mean, to drop it down to, you know. Two or three or whatever, so we have that option to do that in September. The other thing is the cost of living. The cost of living was placed in the budget at 7%. So I did run it 7% and 10, which I emailed that all out to you, with the 7% and 10% increase for the insurance. And then I also did one with 3% cost of living and 5% insurance increase. And the reason I did that, when you look at your sheet that was attached to, that is, that is the one. If you look there in the clue.
On the screen.
That talks about the cash that I have to apply to the budget in order to make it balance. So just shy of 190,000.
Surplus cash.
Surplus cash, basically, so.
Savings.
Yeah.
So that's a budget deficit.
Right, yeah, so I have to, so I have to use our cash to do that. At the 7 and 10%, it was at 500, approximately 560.
So this is the 3 and the 5?
Yes, yeah.
And you're still short the 3 and 5?
Yeah, so. Well, I just took 60,000 off of that, so it's even less, so.
What was the percentage of the raise last year?
It was 8. We went with, you guys were gracious and gave us that 8%. Basically, you gave us the 3% from 2020 that we did not take, when we all agreed not to take the cost of living raise. And then 5, so we just did that together, and that was given to us last year.
Well, I, I'll just, I'll just start the conversation. I, myself could support 5, but I can't do 10.
But we had 7.
That's where I'm at.
We had 7 in there, we had 7%.
Huh?
7%.
I thought you did one with 5.
She did, 5 and 3.
No, I did one, 7% cost of living and 10% insurance increase. And then I did one with 3% cost of living and 5% insurance.
Oh, insurance, okay.
But not 5 and 3.
Okay, okay.
And so refresh my memory. If the insurance went from 5 to, say, 3, that would affect our deficit.
Yes.
And how much does it affect? Because some of that's from the employees and some of it's from the county. That goes towards the insurance.
It's all coming out.
It's all coming out.
Because the rest of it is the employees, they don't have insurance, so. You know, I don't know if they would be to be like.
And you say you'd be comfortable with 5% of the cost of living?
I'm more comfortable with 3.
I, and the only reason I say that is, I mean, as we all well know, of course, that could change in a year, but. Everything in my life is, it doesn't matter what I buy, it's just astronomical. Food, chemicals, fuel, everything is horrible. And. We've got great people, and I, and I wanna see them all stay. I don't want them to start looking for other employment. We've got, we've just, I mean, the longevity of the people that we have shows that we've, they're happy. I wanna, I want them to. So that's why I mentioned the 5. But I thought you had already had that figured, I missed.
No, that is the insurance increase, I apologize.
But, Commissioner Jennings said, what, 3 and 1/2? So what do the rest of you feel?
Yeah, I was leaning towards doing 4.
Because I'm, you know, banking on the fact that, you know, I do, I just. Take to say out of gut feeling that our insurance is not going to be 5% increase, but.
Could you live with 4%, Eric?
Yeah, probably.
Commissioner Flanagan, what's your thoughts?
I can, I can deal with 4.
Commissioners, please.
Almost do, almost do 5, so I'm right, I'm right in that zone.
I wouldn't go any more than 4. I. Look out for my customers and that, and I, that's quite a lot, quite a lot of money.
I realize that, but I, I wanna just go back on the comments I made. I don't think we're out of line to. I think the taxpayers would understand that. So it sounds like we're all in support of 4? Is that what I'm hearing?
Can you, it doesn't take you long to run these numbers.
Could you give me, so run it at 4 and 5?
We'll take, we'll take.
Can you take a break and then give me about 10 minutes?
Thank you.
Everybody will take that.
I'm 15 if you need.
It will come back to order. And Brenda will let us know what you found out.
Okay, so with all the changes that you just directed me with taking out the five thousand, or drug court, fifty thousand from Compass Point, that are taking the ten to five from the Smithers Library, and taking, and adding Tim's step raise. Um, those are just kinds of, can you think of anything else? I just kinda tried to, to remember the ones that, you know, I have them all wrote down.
Sheriff's also, sheriff had a couple of them. The chief and us together, was it?
He, he already had those.
That's part of his budget.
Yeah, he's already got those in court. The, the step raises in there, he already had those incorporated in. So, but thank you. So anyways, you know, I mean that I didn't forget to anything, so like I said, please give me a little grace on that. Um, the difference in between, um, the three and the five would be from two oh five, three forty seven, and it was at one eighty nine, sixty, six fifty five, or that's a fifteen thousand, six ninety two additional surplus cash that we'd have to come up with, applied cash.
To go from a three percent raise to a five percent raise.
Four, three percent. Okay, and what's the deal with five?
I'd have to go calculate that.
Oh, well.
Yeah.
Two oh five, one eighty, sixteen, another sixteen.
Yeah, probably.
I still will support a five.
I'm, I just gave my spiel on five, so.
You need a third one for five?
Sure.
That's me.
Okay. I will implement that and, um.
I'll vote, I'll vote against it. And that, agriculture might pay less than some of the others, but they, they pay, they gurneled off the last two. And, uh, I, I, I go with four.
So about fifteen hundred deficit, somewhere in that range.
Oh, hold that right up till the end, too.
If you want me to, to calculate, I would.
Well, I mean, the difference, Richard, in that one percent wasn't that much.
But that was me taking, you know, the fifty thousand off for Compass Point and that, too, so that, that takes that into you know, factor two.
So that throw that off.
Yeah, so it's not, yeah, that, that will. Well, that's here.
Where are you at, Eric?
Give me five seconds. Just five.
I just don't really like having a bunch of deficit.
Well, we're gonna have a deficit no matter what.
Well, figure out, the bigger the deficit, the harder it is to cover.
No matter where you're at.
Right.
And no way, but more emphasis on one thing than another.
But like, it just, when you think of things like Greg's budgets, this new software buying it, and then what is it, eighty-five thousand dollars a year licensing it?
Yeah.
And we're gonna hold back employees a percent or less than that. It's just, things just don't balance with me. Like, you take care of people. And, so I don't know.
I haven't, there, you can come back next time. Take care of them very good. So you gotta adjust, you gotta compensate one way or both ways.
Well, we are, I would say we're very generous with extra trainings, with extra travel to do that, with the self-aidance. With the sick leave, the vacation leave, the extra days, so, you know, we, we do a lot of things for the employees other than salaries.
I knew somebody that worked up to college and that, and they were making a whole lot less than they would have up there.
Are we still online?
I believe we are.
Yes, sir.
Well, wait for Brenda. I think she's recalculating something.
I'm gonna need it for a little bit, Brenda's doing, she's gonna do additional calculations, so it's gonna need it for now, and, um, so.
You're figuring the difference between four and five?
Come back in a second.
Cause that's a figure I would like to know.
Okay, stand by, please. Bruce, I don't know if you can hear me, but your camera's shut off.
Yeah, I'm just doing some testing. Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Back live. Brenda, would you come up? What's, I wanna know what the monetary differences between four and five?
Four and five is seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-two. And that was, like I said, because when I did from three to four, I took out, I took out, uh,
I can still support the five.
The one that says two eighty-two, six twenty-nine.
Was that the top?
Right there, right there.
I'm not trying to get what he did me.
That one right there, that's, that's five percent. Five percent cost of living and five percent insurance.
And the insurance could come in lower.
Yep, and, yeah, and we can make that adjustment if we need to.
You still all right with five?
Yeah, with all the other big numbers we got floating here for for, for attorneys.
Brandon, are you still okay with five?
Yeah, do we need a motion?
Well, Eric, where are you?
I'm still kind of bothered by that two eighty-two number, so, but a lot of it depends, too, on, on the insurance. Lower that, or we could raise that.
Yeah, I'm ready for a motion.
A move that we accept the budget with a five percent, uh, cost of living increase and a five percent expected, uh, additional expenditure on insurance and the rest of the budget as we have it set.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, further discussion.
Mr. Chairman, that approves any of what Brenda will do, I think, and she, she'll publish the figures of budget in the paper, so it'll be available for folks to see.
Okay, we'll do a roll call. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Flanagan?
Aye.
Fizdale?
Aye.
No.
Jennings?
Uh, no.
Ewing?
Aye.
Me, too.
Yeah.
You, you got that down as a yes or no vote for the budget?
It's just a provisional. This is just a provisional, and the, the public hearing will be set for, let's make this part of the motion as well, sorry about that, for September third.
For the first, first meeting in September?
For the first, yeah.
First Tuesday?
Nine thirty.
I don't think nine thirty.
Don't you wanna double check to see if that's when you have it set?
Um, yeah, standby. So that's a, a bylaw that is first, first Tuesday of September.
Yeah, you have to have a meeting that day, too. That and first of January.
But you're gonna change the budget up till October first.
Yes. Sometimes you have to wait for your TILs to come in, right?
And that could change, yeah, cause we don't get the final values till the fourth Monday in August.
Almost there. Yes, nine thirty, yes.
Brandon, you amend your motion to say that, set the public hearing.
I included, I included the public hearing, yes.
I'll second, yeah, amend.
Right, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
That, that public.
Okay, is there anything else to come before us today? Seeing that, I wouldn't entertain a motion.
Motion adjourned.
So done. We are adjourned.
Thanks, guys. Sorry I wasn't there. I was having trouble getting, rolling out of bed.
Thanks, Brandon.
Feel better.
Get better. Thank you all for your patience for letting you run those figures, like I said.
Well worth it.
Thank you for being willing to go do that.